I will call the Provo City Planning Commission to order. It is August 12th at 6:00 PM. And before we begin our hearing this evening, I have a statement from the state of Utah to read. This is the Provo City Planning Commission Chair's statement regarding Open and Public Meetings Act. In accordance with Utah Code 52-4-2074, I have determined that conducting meetings of the Provo City Planning Commission with anchor locations such as the council chambers presents a substantial risk to the health and safety of those who may be present there. These are the facts upon which I have made this determination. Utah has been a declared state of emergency due to novel coronavirus disease 2019 or COVID-19 since March 6, 2020, a disease outbreak which the World Health Organization has characterized as a pandemic. The Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, the CDC, state that COVID-19 is easily spread from person to person between people who are in close contact with one another. The spread is through respiratory droplets when an infected person coughs, sneezes, or talks, and it may be spread by people who are non-symptomatic. Federal, state, and local authorities have recommended that individuals limit public gatherings, wear face masks, and follow social distancing guidelines; that individuals exposed to persons experiencing symptoms of COVID-19 self-quarantine for 14 days; and that individuals experiencing symptoms of COVID-19 self-isolate to prevent and control a continuing spread of COVID-19. Notwithstanding that Utah generally and Utah County specifically have been moved to the low-risk or yellow phase, reported COVID-19 cases in Utah County have more than doubled since May 31st, 2020. Physical distancing measures will be difficult to set up and maintain in the council chambers. Therefore, for the next 30 days, all meetings of the Provo City Planning Commission will be conducted entirely via electronic means. Planning Commission meetings are broadcast live and available later on demand at youtube.com/user/provochannel17. Agendas and support materials are available at provo.org/plancommission. To make a public comment or to join a meeting via telephone, follow the instructions provided on public notices of each meeting. To send comments to the Planning Commission members or weigh in on current issues, email the Planning Commission members at dspublichearings@provo.org. And we do have a very full agenda this evening. We have a total of 12 items on our agenda, and we have eight commissioners. So I would just ask or request that commissioners use the raise hand function that's found at the bottom of the participants menu when you wish to make a comment, ask a question, or contribute in some way. That just makes it a little easier to manage a large group. And then housekeeping items, there are starred items on the agenda this evening. These are legislative, and they require municipal council to make final determination. The planning commissioners will be making recommendations to municipal council on those asterisk items. The items that are not asterisk are administrative, and the planning commissioners make a final determination on those items. So I'll start with roll call. And I would like each commissioner to state their full name and whether they have any conflicts of interest with any of the items on tonight's agenda. Ms. Urquaga?
Laurie Urquaga, no conflicts.
Thank you. Ms. Jones?
Ally Jones, no conflicts.
Thank you. Mr. Gonzalez?
Daniel Gonzalez, no conflicts.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson?
Lisa Johnson, no conflicts.
Thank you. Mr. Hury? Hury?
Henry? Brian Henry, no conflicts.
Thank you. Oh, I can't read my own writing. I apologize. Mr. Anderson?
Eve Anderson, no conflicts.
Thank you. And Mr. Knudsen?
Robert Knudsen, no conflict.
Thank you very much. All right, with that out of the way, then, I will start the hearing with item number one. Item number one is legislative, so we'll be making a recommendation to municipal council on item one. The Community and Neighborhood Services Department requests an ordinance text amendment to Provo City Code Section 14.5 (9).020 (D) relating to accessory dwellings as a permitted accessory use in the Pro R9 LDR zone. This has citywide application, and Mr. Taylor will present item one.
Actually, tonight, it's me, unfortunately.
Oh, Mr. Mills?
So, thank you, commission members. So this is actually a staff-initiated amendment to our code. Kind of give a little bit of background. This is actually relating to a very specific area that you see on your screen here. This is just south of the cemetery in southeast Provo, and this is a few different residences that are in what we call the Pro R9 zone. So Pro zones, like you're familiar with, have some very specific zoning, things like that. So staff, in looking at this zone, there were a couple discrepancies that we discovered and we just wanted to correct. And so in the permitted accessory uses for this section, previously it had allowed, it mentioned accessory living spaces or accessory apartments as a permitted use. We wanted to give a little bit of clarification because in addition to single-family detached dwellings in this Pro zone, twin homes and duplexes are allowed in this area, and we wanted to give some further clarification to where those accessory apartments might be able to go. This Pro zone is actually surrounded by the RC zone. So most of you are aware that the RC zone allows accessory dwellings, one for every single-family detached dwelling that's owner-occupied. And there are three properties, three parcels in this Pro zone that actually could have a single-family detached dwelling. There are four other parcels that are developed currently with twin homes. And so we just wanted to add some clarification to let the people that are in this zone know that those accessory apartments are permitted in single-family detached dwellings. And the reason that there was some discrepancy is because in a later section of this code, in Under Occupancy Restrictions, there was a provision that said no accessory apartments or second kitchens shall be permitted in any dwelling unit. And so the zone was actually in conflict with itself. So we just wanted to correct that, and we have submitted those amendments, and just wanted to get your feedback. We feel that this is a good change and just provides additional clarity in our code. Available for any questions that you may have.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Mills. Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Mills? Comments? Yes, Ms. Urquaga?
Yeah, Mr. Mills, I just wanted to make sure I understand there. These dwellings in this particular area are the only dwellings in the entire city that this would apply to?
That's correct.
Okay.
So if you see on the screen there, only the property that's outlined in orange is this particular Pro zone. It's one of the reasons we have so many zones in Provo is because we have about 50 of these Pro zones throughout our city, each with their own codified rules and regulations.
That sounds like something we should discuss a little bit more in the future.
I think that sounds like a great idea.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions for staff?
I just want to clarify, Robert, this is something that's already written in this way. We're not actually making it a new thing, right? You're just clarifying the wording where it's inconsistent.
Yeah, so it's currently inconsistent with itself, and we're just trying to make it consistent with the intent of the zone and the intent of the surrounding zone. So actually, there are only two properties, two parcels in this whole zone that would actually be able to have an accessory apartment. It's this house here, this house here. This lot is being developed with a duplex currently. So really, it's just a zone change, or an amendment that would say those two homes could have an accessory apartment if they were owner-occupied.
Great. Any other questions, commissioners, comments? All right, seeing none, I will ask whether there are any neighborhood chairs who have commented on this? Any members of the community who have commented on item one?
I don't show anyone at the moment.
Okay. Did we want to wait a few moments to see if anyone weighs in on it?
Yes. Robert, can you bring up the make-public comment slide?
And I'll just let the commissioners know that as staff, we haven't received any public comment.
Thank you. All right, if we don't have any public comments coming in, I think we could turn this back over to the commissioners. So commissioners, I would look for any further discussion or emotion on item one, and this will be a recommendation to municipal council. Mr. Anderson?
Sorry, needed unmute. I'm ready to make a motion, Madam Chair.
All right. Were there any other comments? Ms. Johnson had her hand up also.
I was just going to say this seems like a cleanup job that we don't really need to argue about.
All right, thank you. Mr. Anderson?
Thank you. I move that we recommend that item number one be approved.
I'll second that.
Let me read it in again, then. Item one, Mr. Anderson's motion is to recommend approval for item one. The Community and Neighborhood Services Department requests an ordinance text amendment to Provo City Code Section 14.5D9.020D relating to the removal of accessory dwellings as a permitted accessory use in the Pro R9 LDR zone. So Ms. Johnson has seconded Mr. Anderson's motion. All those in favor of forwarding a positive recommendation to municipal council? Ms. Urquaga?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson? Ms. Johnson? We may have lost her audio for a moment. Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
And Mr. Knudsen?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Your mute is on, Ms. Johnson.
We were just voting on the motion. Ms. Johnson, your vote?
Oh, I said it twice, sorry.
So that's an aye?
Yes, in favor.
Great, thank you. All right, then, we will forward a positive recommendation on item one to municipal council, and that was unanimous.
Thank you all.
Thank you. All right, we have three, the next three items, items two, three, and four are all related, so I will read them all in together, although we will be making separate motions on each of them. So item two is also legislative, and we'll be making a recommendation on it. Jeffrey Rans requests ordinance text amendments to the low-density residential LDR and very-low-density residential VLDR zones to reduce the minimum lot depth from 90 feet to 75 feet, and this would have citywide impact. Item three, also legislative. Jeffrey Rans requests a zone change from residential conservation, RC, to very-low-density residential, VLDR, to subdivide the lot to create one of 5,000-square-foot single-family lot located at 189 South 500 West in the Franklin neighborhood. And lastly, and this is administrative, Jeffrey Rans requests concept plan approval for a two-lot residential subdivision in the VLDR zone located at 189 South 500 West in the Franklin neighborhood. And Mr. Larson will address items two through four.
Very good. And Larson Development Services Staff. So what I've got up here, well, before we get into that, let me just speak, I'm going to just kind of talk about this property really quick since you've read all three in. Mr. Rans has purchased this property, if you can see my cursor, about a quarter acre, Fifth West, Second South. He wants to establish two lots here, basically establish another lot right here, 5,000-square-foot lot on this east side. And so he has given us a concept plan, as you can see on the screen there. And the, so we'll talk a little bit more about this in a moment, but the, kind of just the issue at hand is the lot depth. If you, I don't know how closely you can see those dimensions, but the big issue here is he has to have, these lots have to have 90 feet of lot depth, and he just can't get that. There's no way for him to achieve a 90-foot lot depth on these lots. And so he's proposing an amendment to the LDR and the VLDR. And the reason why he's, why we're going to talk about both of these zones in these applications is because he started out in the LDR and then ended up shifting his proposal to the VLDR. They're really very similar zones. It's just, I think the big thing, the big difference is that the VLDR allows seven units per acre, whereas the LDR allows 15 units per acre. I think the applicant shift could be viewed as kind of a gesture to the neighborhood, the Franklin neighborhood, that he is truly intent on, you know, low-density development. In fact, his concept plan shows that he's just trying to get an additional lot here. So his proposal is pretty simple. He simply, his proposal is that one-family detached dwellings have a lot density of 75 feet rather than 90. I've added some additional language there. I've included some additional language. That came from the account of the city attorney's office. They just thought that it'd be more, it'd be better to have some clarity there by that last added sentence there, all other permitted use is 90 feet. So staff believes this is a reasonable request. When you sewn the LDR and the VLDR, a one-family detached dwelling site, the minimum is 5,000 square feet. And you kind of compare that with the R1 zone, the smallest lots there, 6,000 and 7,000 square feet. The density in the LDR, the VLDR, of course, is 90 feet, but in the R1, 6,000 and R1, 7,000, you can have a 75-foot lot depth. So there seems to be a little bit of disparity there. So I think that this proposal from the applicant kind of helps to rectify that disparity and gives a little more equitable lot depth there. So that's, yeah, I think staff feels comfortable with this proposal. And I would, as far as your staff report, I would please use this slide for your, this is the motion that we want to put forward, is this one on the screen, or this proposal on the screen is the one we want, that we're recommending approval of. So again, staff would recommend to the Planning Commission that they recommend to the city council approval of the text amendment as seen on the slide.
Great, thank you. Commissioners, any questions or comments for staff? Ms. Johnson?
I have a few questions. Is the lot that's measured from the front of the house to the back of the property? Like, it looks on the plat map that you gave us that one of them meets the requirements but not the other if you're going from the front of the house to the back. So I'm wondering how that's measured.
Yeah, it's measured from the front to the back. Now, we're, so probably the most important consideration is this house right here. In order for it to, we had to consider this the front entrance. And so if you, he's not going to get the lot depth running in the house, that, running a lot this way. And I'm not sure where you saw 90-foot lot, 90-foot lot depth because I don't see it anywhere on any of those lots where you get a 90-foot depth because the longest distance is the lot depth, and it's 82 and a half feet.
Oh, I was just saying that it was, it's only deep enough with the new proposed requirements of 75 if you go from the side of the house. But can you, can we always fudge things like that? Because clearly, isn't there a covered porch facing 500 West on this house that would tell you the depth goes the other direction?
When I went by the property and I saw a door that appeared to be an entrance to the building with a sidewalk, and so it looked like a, looked like a good candidate for a front entrance to me.
On the south side?
On the south side.
Okay, so that's not, it's not pushing the limits there. That's actually...
No, it looked like a front entrance.
Okay. Is there, is that little notch in the, on the north end of the eastern property, is that so that that one has a sufficient depth, or that shouldn't matter, right? What's the purpose of that notch there?
Yeah, the notch shouldn't, you know, shouldn't play to the equation of a lot depth. You'll go north, run north to south in consideration and not angle over into that notch. That, my understanding, and the applicant can speak to this, but I believe that that was used to pick up the additional area needed for the zone.
Yeah, hi.
My other question?
Oh, sorry, sorry.
Well, we'll call on you in just a little bit, Mr. Anderson.
Sorry, I thought you said my name.
My other question was, Mr. Larson, is this going to create any possible loopholes? It seems very appropriate for this project maybe, but I always worry that if we change it across the entire spectrum of a zone that then there'll be somebody else who can come in and not have the best intentions in mind. So what are the potential loopholes that this could create for someone?
I'm not aware of potential loopholes. I think it's appropriate for one-family dwellings. I like the fact that it's only proposed, that this amendment's only proposed for one-family dwellings. I wouldn't think that it'd be appropriate for, you know, a townhome development. I think a lot of time, basically, what I'm seeing from other applications, some where they're using the LDR, the LDR zone, they're trying to angle in a row of townhomes kind of deep into a long lot. So I think that a 75-foot lot depth in that scenario would be a bad situation. But I think that this is, I mean, this is appropriate, and I think it's straightforward, and I think... and I think it lines up with the R1-6 and R1-7 zone that...
Yeah, it seems to step down, so that does seem logical. Okay, thank you, those are my questions.
Mr. Chiaga?
I was wondering about the configuration of the existing home. Does the proposed lot have conforming setbacks on all sides? Looks really close.
Eight-foot setbacks on the, on the side there, on the east, that conforms. They're conforming on the south, and I can show you the, so let me show you this. So you can see the setbacks. You have to have a 20-foot front setback, 20-foot rear, and then an 8- and a 10-foot side setback.
Okay, the 20-foot rear, that notch cuts into that, at least partially.
Yeah, staff actually had a concern with that. I'm sorry, I overspoke over you, go ahead.
No, I'm just saying that that, the notch looks a little awkward for that, but I can understand why it's needed.
Right. Staff also was concerned about that, and in your staff report, in one of the staff reports for Mr. Rand, one of Mr. Rand's items, I noted a concern with the setback, and noted that it basically has a 13-foot setback. But then I then became aware that actually, staff actually has the ability, the Development Services Director or designee has the ability to vary those, to allow for a reduction in setbacks, provided that three, you can see those on this, I don't know if you can see those on the screen. I'm having a hard time seeing them myself, but there are three criteria. And if that criteria is met, then staff can give a reduction. And when I reviewed those criteria, I thought it was reasonable to anticipate being able to give a reduction on the setbacks for that, or your setback.
Okay, thank you.
I had a quick comment in terms of the actual ordinances for VLDR and LDR. And I've just seen it done this way in other places, and it seems to be pretty flexible, but still accomplish the same thing. Rather than specifying the lot depth requirement, could you not just state the minimum lot width? The minimum lot square footage? The minimum front side and rear setbacks? And then the max lot coverage?
Yeah, and I think we accomplish all of that in the ordinance already. Certainly, I can't remember the lot coverage, but I would assume if it's, if it was modeled after the other zones, there should be a lot coverage requirement here.
Yeah, it is mentioned on this one. It's at the bottom of the screen.
It's at the bottom there, yep. So, thank you. Yeah, I, we've talked about that as a staff, actually, the idea of lot depth requirement, eliminating the lot depth requirements. We haven't, I don't think we've fully considered that, but it's definitely been something that we have talked about more so in passing.
And my only other comment is that in urban infill areas like this that I've worked in in the past, generally for this intensity of development, which is just single-family, the backyard setback, or the rear setback is, I've seen it as small as 15 feet for this level of density. So in these older neighborhoods, we might want to consider something like that in the future.
Yeah, perhaps. And I like the flexibility the ordinance currently gives us in being able to reduce the setbacks when it's clear that, you know, that those criteria have been met, and it seems appropriate that, I think one of the criteria is that it's kind of met, that that reduction would match the other development, other built environment in the neighborhoods, so.
Great, thank you. Mr. Anderson?
Yeah, thank you. I think for staff to start with, on the proposed plat, it looks like the new lot would be right at 5,000 square feet, is that right?
Correct.
So the configuration of that lot, that literally is just to hit that minimum lot size?
I'll let the applicant speak to that.
Okay, well, just from my perspective, assuming that that's the case, that really, I think, represents what's a concern for me about the proposal. Inherently, I don't have a concern with 75 feet of lot depth, but infill development, in my view, really is only successful if it looks like it's always belonged there and, you know, like it's very seamlessly worked into a neighborhood situation. And the configuration of this lot is kind of the opposite of that for me. It really looks like something's being shoehorned in, you know, gerrymandered to hit the numbers that are needed, and that's something that I can't support. But again, 75 feet of lot depth inherently, really don't have any concern with that. I agree with what Madam Chair said about, you know, typically setbacks and things like that in these situations being reduced. I think in part, that works in this kind of environment because, you know, there's a strong possibility that 100 and something years ago, when, you know, this neighborhood was originally developed, there probably were some structures built in with, you know, less space between them and the property line than maybe 25 feet or something like that. So I think that can, that can look and feel like a really natural part of the neighborhood. Lot lines like this, though, in my opinion, don't, and I'd hate to see that happen here, or certainly on any kind of a widespread scale. But at the same time, in my view, 5,000 square feet's not necessarily a magic number. So for example, if the minimum lot size were 4,500 square feet, let's just say, and that allowed for the development of a lot with, I would just say maybe a little bit more of a rational kind of configuration, to where somebody could put a home on there, you know, again, that maybe looked like it fit, and you'd have fence lines and different things like that. You know what, in a gridded part of a community, would follow the same kind of rectilinear sort of right-angle arrangement that, you know, maybe things naturally would have, then it'd be a lot easier for me to support a change that would allow for this. So I guess what I'm saying is that I'm game to consider, you know, maybe some other changes to make this happen at this location, but with the way that it's configured, I'd probably even want to stop at the 75-foot reduction just to not have it go any further.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
Someone mentioned that I could respond to that?
I'll see if the commissioners have any further comments or questions for staff, and then invite you to discuss the project. Commissioners, any other questions or comments for staff?
Yeah, Daniel Gonzalez. I kind of tend to agree with the comments Mr. Anderson made regarding the having a more contiguous lot dimensions. Yeah, I just echo that.
Great, thank you. Mr. Henry?
Just so we're clear, so this house faces 200 South, it doesn't face 500 West, that's correct?
It has entrances on both 500 West and 200 South.
And by the address of the property, which street would technically be the front, based on the address?
Its address is 189 South 500 West.
I can answer that.
Okay, and that's all the questions I have.
Great. Commissioners, any other questions or comments?
Are we asking questions just about the first of the three items, or are we trying to do all three at the same time?
I read all three in, but it's going to require three separate motions, and I think we have really, well, 2 and 3. 2 concerns the ordinance. 3 concerns the zone change. And 4 is the concept plan. So I think we could take them singly at this point, since we're talking about...
All right, well, ask me other questions.
Sorry?
I have a question. If we, if we like the development, but say we have some objections to the way it's dimensioned, what alternatives would there be if we were to say no at this point? What would be the applicant's alternative course of action?
The applicant certainly has plenty of opportunities to propose, you know, a new lot configuration, different, you can propose other changes to the ordinance. I suppose even you could forward a recommendation for a change. However, this is just, this specific item is only noticed to deal with lot depth in the LDR, the VLDR zone. So it wasn't noticed to do other things to make up changes to those zones, so. I suppose it could be continued and renoticed to, more generally, to address other items in the zone.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments, commissioners?
Right, Henry, one more question. Does staff see any major issues or problems with that particular lot line? Or has that posed any problems in other projects, having that lot line be that way?
Staff isn't necessarily in love with the configuration, but we are, I'd say, we are supportive of it moving forward. We recognize that it's not a pretty lot, but we feel like it can function as a, it can be a reasonably usable dwelling site for homes.
Any other comments or questions for staff? All right, seeing none, I will invite the applicant, Mr. Rand, to speak to any of those issues he heard discussed and present his project.
Sure. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Fantastic. Hey, thanks for the opportunity. It's my first application and presentation in front of this group, so it's good to see you all. A couple of easy things first, then maybe we can talk more conceptually. So if you look at the picture of the lot and where the house is configured, the actual front door to the house is on 500 West. And then that's where the, that's before the construction project began. That's where the driveway is, and that's where a walkway is to that front door on 500 West. So that puts that front sort of away from where that backyard to, you know, hopefully to be, a lot would be. But they also use the door, I mean, to Brandon's point, they have a door under a porch on 200 South as well. That's just where the kitchen is, so people go in and out there. But the actual front door with a little walkway is on the 500 West. And then in terms of the, just cutting right to it, because I think, I'm not gonna claim to represent anyone's sentiments here, but I think there was, at least on staff, given the staff reports, on Items 2 and 3 seemed pretty straightforward, just to make it a little more equitable, you know, to match R1-6 and R1-7, to have 75 feet. And then we're yet to really talk about the rezone and whether that makes sense. But, because I think, given the characteristics of a Franklin neighborhood and some infill and some new housing, that augurs well for rezoning to a VLDR. And I chose VLDR, sort of working with the city. They think that's, you know, because my intent was to build detached, single-family home. I don't want to do higher density, sort of keeping the characteristics of the neighborhood. But those two major items, which are legislative, of course, aside, let's cut right to the thing, the configuration of a lot line. I started going on, is there an iterative process with a lot of people's input, right? And I don't care for the look and feel of that line either. But the good news here, and that's what Brandon mentioned before, but I don't think anyone latched on to it. The Planning Commission, the Director or his or her designee, has the power to change that and vary some of that. And I think if we, for instance, if you look at the eight-foot setback, side setback from the east part of the house, that could easily go to five or four. That buys you 250, 300 feet, and that would obviate or negate the little jump out at the top. You could change the angle at the bottom a little bit. There's a couple of things you can do, because I totally agree with the two people that said, you know, what are you doing with the shape of the line? That was just to force feed the 5,000 feet, given existing setbacks. And again, given that the commission has the power to make changes, you know, we could go from eight to four. We could, instead of that back rectangle, just eliminate that, and maybe make the angle a little bit different. I think we'd easily accomplish that, and I think the main focus is the 75-foot and the VLDR rezon. But working with staff, since it's an administrative thing, I could work with my site planner and with staff to get something that is more contiguous. I think someone used the word contiguous, something a little more contiguous and consistent with the neighborhood. Does that make sense?
Yes, thank you. Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Rans? Mr. Chiaga?
I don't necessarily want to get into the details. I don't particularly like the lot, the way it's currently configured, because it does seem rather awkward to me. But that angle on the front, if that were sort of, if the notch were quote-unquote "there", that would make more sense to me, if you could make a rectangle spot out of it. I'm just curious, and maybe we need to take this back to staff, but what are the options? If we were to approve this current lot configuration, what happens? Is the lot itself, when does that get fixed and platted and written into the, not the ordinances, but the ownership records?
Yeah, at the plat stage, they'll have to come back through with the two-lot subdivision plat, and it will be ironed out at that point.
At that point, though, the Planning Commission does not weigh in on it anymore, right?
No, that'd be administrative. It'd be a final plat that we do administratively.
Okay. Good to know.
Any other questions, commissioners? For Mr. Rans? Mr. Henry?
I guess just a comment. I can see why the lot is that way. It is to meet that 5,000-square-foot minimum. I'm trying to think through this in a, in a day-to-day, you know, as I'm walking through this neighborhood, do I feel like that front lot line would be off? I'm struggling a little bit to think that it would really bother me. And obviously, the back lot line, that's between the two owners, since it's on the back of the lot. A question, I don't know if this is even relevant, but Mr. Rans, are you living in this home at the moment? Are you planning to rent the home? What's kind of the expectation there?
No, I have, I have a tenant who lives there. And so the thought is to build a, you know, a next-door detached, single-family, really high-character, interesting little, you know, something that's consistent with the pioneer neighborhood that it's in, right? I mean, I live in Provo, but not there. And so I've, you know, I have, I love the house. I don't know if anyone has taken a second to look at it. It's a lot of character to it, interesting cuts, and, you know, I want to do something, you know, somewhere next door, only new. And, you know, I want to do something, you know, similar next door, only new. And I think, working with some of the people, he's now retired, but Brian Maxwell and I, this started seven, eight months ago. He was, he'd said multiple times that, you know, the city's trying to get more neighborhood infill in a positive way, newer development, not necessarily high density, but more single-family homes and that kind of thing. So that's what I intend on doing. I, look, I'm not being that young. I totally relate with some of the concerns. And I think the concerns mostly are not so much with the 75-foot ordinance amendment or the rezone to V LDR. Because I think that's totally, you know, it's consistent with the staff report and the character of the neighborhood, a long-term plan of the city. But it's just the shape. And I think, I think when Mr. Larson mentioned that on an administrative level, we'd have to work through it to make it, you know, they're the ones who have to approve. And I think they share your concern, that we want to make this as intuitive as we can and still keep the 5,000-foot minimum, right? So I think that back rectangle is either entirely or almost entirely eliminated if we just move the eight feet to something different. Because that will add 250 feet right there if it goes from eight to five. If it goes to eight for four, that's over 300 feet. And I don't think that, see what I'm saying? So I think there's ways to do it. They have the ability, as I understand, I mean, we've talked a couple of times about it, they have the ability in the ordinance to make the changes that would reflect what they want to do. So I'm sort of at, I don't want to put it as like I'm at their mercy, but I have to satisfy them. And I think they share your concerns about the shape, that it needs to be a little more contiguous, so.
Can I just say something really quick?
Please.
What if we continued this item? And I think there may be some support for the idea of maybe reducing the lot, the lot area minimum to 4,000 square feet. Is anybody interested in that? I think that staff might be, I think that it's possible that staff could be supportive of a 4,000-square-foot minimum.
Ms. Urquaga?
I would actually like the idea of adjusting the minimum lot size in these kinds of situations. So I'd be in favor of that. I don't know what the timetable is for Mr. Rand and whether you'd be in favor of waiting a little while for an adjustment with the city.
So am I hearing yet another application and another go-round to change from 5,000 to some other number, like 4,500?
We would have to renotice it and bring it back to the planning commission. You wouldn't have to file a new application, but we would have to bring it back to planning commission.
Well, I mean, if that's your desire, I'm sort of, I mean, you're thinking of a bigger picture here, and I appreciate that. It's a little more strategic than focusing just on this particular lot configuration. I would like to know general sentiment. I mean, do people like the idea of 75 feet to be more equitable with R16 and R17? And do people like the idea of V LDR? And if the answers to those two questions are yes, I mean, maybe separate, do a lot, a square width, I mean, a square footage reduction in addition to that? Or just give, you know, give Brandon and his team a chance to make the lines a little more obvious? Because I think there's an easy solution, because of the square footage. But again, this body that I'm addressing, you know, you see a bigger picture and more comprehensive than in the weeds of my reality.
Right, and we'll discuss that in just a little bit amongst the commissioners. Mr. Anderson?
Yeah, I think I just want to echo Commissioner Urquaga's comment there a minute ago. And maybe to add to it, part of why I'd support, you know, some minimum lot size that's smaller than 5,000 square feet is that I've seen some great projects developed with single-family detached homes on lots that are smaller, again, than 5,000 square feet. And I think doing what we can to encourage the development of single-family homes, something that, you know, has some, hopefully propensity to be owner-occupied in parts of the community where, you know, I think we lack that, would be a great step and a good direction for neighborhoods. And, you know, again, I think sometimes with great intentions, some of the numbers that we have in codes, you know, end up tripping us up in terms of being able to design things the way that probably we'd like to see them designed. So, you know, maybe lessening that as an obstacle here, I think, would be really good.
Thank you. Mr. Henry?
I agree. As I look at this property generally on the map, I don't feel like a second house here is going to interrupt the neighborhood. I think it'll blend beautifully. It's just a matter of getting the legal part of it correct. So one question for Development Services. Would this be an adjustment to the existing zone? Would this just be the LDA or the VLDA? Or would this be a totally new zone?
It'd be just be an adjustment to, I foresee it's just being an adjustment to the LDR and the LDR zones.
There's one question I had as I was looking at. I was surprised how similar the LDR and the VLDR are. Would it make sense to take one of them and maybe make it more amenable to a smaller square footage? And maybe differentiate it a little bit from the other?
Yeah, we could definitely consider that. I think staff would want to look at that one a little bit closer. Because you're right, there is not a whole lot of diff, really, the two main differences I'm aware of with the LDR and the VLDR is the allowed, the number of how units you can have in an acre. And then the other one would be the required percentage of amenities. I think the, well, one of them's 10%, the other's 20%. But I think that's something that staff could look at closer if this item were continued. I think we could look at that a little closer and come back with a recommendation.
Yeah, because that was my, as I looked at it, the one is seven units to the acre, and the other's 15. Seven units to the acre, you can't even go to 4,000 square feet across the board. So it would make sense, I believe it's the LDR that allows 15 to make an adjustment in that zone.
Ms. Johnson?
I just had a question. I think maybe I asked this with the other project that we reviewed recently that was in the RC zone. But just maybe now that we're talking about making modifications to the lot size, would it be smart to, well, maybe just review with us the purpose of the RC zone and what the restrictions are, just so everybody's on the same playing field? And then my follow-up to that is, is it just to hold these properties in a conservation status until something better comes along? And that's when we modify them to a different zone? Or would it be smarter for us to say our intent is to not allow development in the RC zone unless it matches what's already there? You know, would it be smarter for us to change the RC zone and allow infill that's compatible? Or would it be better for us to open a can of worms that's more citywide and allow smaller lot sizes in these other zones?
I, the RC zone, I think we're getting off into another zone that I haven't really analyzed. I know that my perception is that it's been a holding zone. And when you're, when you want to do something different in the RC zone, you're, the idea is you're supposed to kind of shoot for some other zoning. I'd hate to, this, diving into the RC zone seems to be overly complicating this issue, I would say.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Yeah, well, I'm looking at it, I'm looking at street views in it and the lot size. I don't, I don't think we need to necessarily change the lot area to approve this plan at this point. But, and my question, I guess, would be for Mr. Rand would be, if the lot area was reduced, would you actually submit a plan with a reduced lot area, minimum lot area of 4,000? And how it would affect your, the lot buildability?
Right, it's a good question.
Project that you could use?
No, it's a good question. I think if you had that picture of the lot there, and if there were no rectangular jet-in, you know, at the back, that would put it to.
Mr. Rand, could you repeat that, please? You were cutting out. Hello? Mr. Rand?
Yeah?
We can hear you now. It looks like you're muted now. Mr. Rand, could you please unmute? There you go.
Yeah, I'm doing it. Can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, great. I got a message saying unstable internet connection, so.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, so I see that I'm unmuted. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Fantastic, okay. So buildability, if, we've seen lovely homes that are 20 feet wide. So I don't think I'd have any problem building a neat little house if we happen to go to 4,500 square feet or 4,300 square feet minimum square footage for the lot. I think that'd be fine. Have an angle on the front, and you wouldn't have that rank. I am wondering a lot whether Development Services staff has the ability to do that right now. Can you, for one? Be 5,000, and therefore?
I, no, this has to be readvertised. If we're going to make any other changes to this zone, it does need to be readvertised.
Okay, I understand. Okay, so to answer your question, we could do it. Nice, and still hit 5,000 feet by varying a few things that they have authority to do. I think that's an easy course, but you're probably looking now more citywide. Do you want to have some 4,500 or 4,000, you know, sort of R14 type of situations? Am I reading right?
I'm sorry, say that one more time?
I'm, some of the commissioners, I think, are maybe more broadly than this discussion, are looking for maybe a smaller square footage requirement, not so much so that I can make mine work, but more citywide. And, I mean, that might be something, again, I don't know who proposes that. Or if it's just for my, I mean, we have to, we would have to change the ordinance, right?
Yeah, yes.
Right, and the ordinance changes have to be approved by municipal council. The planning commissioners just make recommendations on those.
Sure.
Commissioners, any other questions for Mr. Rand? Ms. Urquaga?
I would like to know, with your plans, if we were to continue this and you did not get approval for another four to six weeks, would, what would that do to your development plans? Does it impinge on things that you already have in process?
Just my general plan. I don't have, I don't have a builder chomping at the bit. I have a few I've talked to. I mean, I've, a little background, I know it's a long agenda tonight, but we started this back in January, and the city itself was going to propose an LDR rezone. And then, several months later, they've said, well, no, why don't you just do it for your individual property? So I burned a bunch of months, and that's not the end of the world to anyone. But I, if the issue, I mean, if there's a consensus that you, that this group wants to have less than 5,000 feet, that sort of strategic policy-level discussion, I would certainly be a witness. But I'm not sure I'm the person that would propose that. I mean, if that is for, I mean, that's a bigger change than going from 90 to 75 feet, when that probably should have been done a while ago, as I was told by several staff. It just never got done. But something, when you're going from 5,000 to less, I mean, am I the proposer? Am I the applicant for that? Or is that just a continuation of this? I mean, maybe that's a question for you, Brandon. I mean, if we want to consider 4,500 feet, that would be citywide application, right? And I'd be the test case, and I'd still be the applicant, but I wouldn't have to resubmit. Is that a whole separate application process, or is that just an amendment to this?
You could revise your application. We wouldn't, you wouldn't be charged a new application fee. We could bring it back probably the first September meeting. I don't know the exact date, but we could bring it back in two.
Yeah.
We know.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not, go ahead.
Sorry, I think the other possibility the commissioners have tonight is whether we want to make a motion on changing the ordinance as it is today from 90 feet to 75 feet of lot depth. And.
That I was going to say.
And, you know, whether or not we want to approve a zone change on the property. We could certainly proceed that far with the recommendation that the minimum lot size and some of these other items be further examined and that the ordinance be modified at some point. That's one way to approach this. And then whether or not we want to approve the subdivision, the lot drawing, is, you know, another, another separate item. So I'm hearing most of the commissioners tonight thinking that a reduction in lot size requirement is probably appropriate in these infill neighborhoods. Ms. Johnson, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I agree with what, I was actually going to say what you said. And I feel like, I know we still have to have community input, so, ready to make a motion. But I feel like we, in our questions so far, are all in agreement that 75 is probably a logical step down so that it matches with the zones on both sides, the requirements of zones on both ends of the spectrum. And that we, if he's got some development that will contribute in a positive way to the neighborhood, that we don't see a problem with the zone change. So I feel like that we could, assuming that we continue to feel that way towards the end of this discussion, we could have those things move on to the city council for them to review while we wait for the lot size to come back and the concept plan to come back.
Right.
So making progress instead of just put on hold.
If we have, if we do not have any other commissioner comments at this point, our questions for Mr. Rand, I would like to go ahead and open it up to public comment if we have any on this item, on these three items, actually. Any objections to that, commissioners? All right, why don't we open up items two, three, and four to public comment at this time, then? And I think we need to change the slide for the public comment screen. Thank you. And did we receive any written in advance notices on this, on these items?
Say that one more time?
Did we receive any written in advance of the hearing items, comments from the public on this?
I'm not aware of any. I'm not aware of any written comments on this one.
All right. And I guess we should give this about 30 seconds, 45 seconds or so. See if anyone would like to comment.
There are no public comments at time.
Are we ready to close this to public comment, then?
Give 10 more seconds.
Great, thank you.
Okay, no public comments.
Great, thank you. Right, we will close items two, three, and four to public comment at this time, and I'll turn it back over to. and I'll turn it back over to the commissioners for further discussion, any questions of the applicant or of city staff. And please keep in mind that we do have three items, so we need to make motions on these three items separately. Ms. Urquaga?
Yes, Mr. Rans, I actually thought about this earlier and then forgot to ask. Have you had neighborhood input on this? Has there been a neighborhood meeting?
Yes, so I presented in January at the Franklin Neighborhood, at the library of Franklin Elementary School, half a dozen people. And then the chair, you know, it was uniformly positive. It wasn't like they were excited, but like, oh yeah, feedback was positive. And then, since the, working for the city, we changed tax a little bit because they thought that they might be submitting themselves an application. I'm not sure the terminology, but they were, they were gonna do it. And then it came back to me doing it again. So, I recontacted the chair, and this is maybe two months ago. What we did is we, those pictures that, some of the pictures that you all have seen tonight, we posted that on the Facebook page of Franklin Neighborhood and asked for feedback and comments. And I only saw three comments and they were all positive. One was as simple as like, "Yeah, sounds good." Another was, "Yeah, this is just what we need for the neighborhood. We really like the direction." It was that kind of thing. I wouldn't say, that was not a scientific survey, but we put it out there for feedback. And then the chair also said, I contacted her a couple times subsequent to that, and she said she's sort of handling it from there. And if she gets more feedback, she would submit that to the city. So, generally speaking, it was positive.
Okay, that's helpful to know. Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions, comments? Commissioners? And again, if you would like to take these one by one, item two was only concerning the minimum lot depth, amending that from 90 feet to 75 feet. Ms. Urquaga or Ms. Jensen? Ms. Jensen, do you have your hand up?
I was talking to myself. I feel like we're all in agreement on item two. I'm happy to make a motion.
Great.
Is anyone opposed to that being done already? I would like to make a motion that we recommend forwarding a positive recommendation to the municipal council. For item two, Jeffrey Rans requests ordinance text amendments to the low-density residential and very-low-density residential zones to reduce the minimum lot depth from 90 feet to 75 feet.
Great, thank you. Do we have a second for Ms. Jensen's motion?
A little second.
I'm sorry?
Mr. Knutson beat me.
Seconded by Mr. Knutson?
Yes.
All right. All those, all those in favor of the motion to send a positive recommendation on item two to municipal council is stated by Ms. Jensen. Ms. Urquaga?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Ms. Jensen? Mr. Henry? Mr. Henry?
Could I jump in here really quick and say one clarifying thing that I think will be helpful for the record? Could you just, what about making the motion to say specifically that it's the language used as, I don't know how you want to word it, but basically the language presented tonight in the staff meeting and not in the staff, in the planning commission meeting and not the language in the staff report?
In regards to?
The proposal, because the language in the staff report is not the same language that I've got up on the screen. That's what I noted earlier in the meeting. The language up on the screen right now is different than what you had in your staff report. So, I wanted the record to be clear that you're approving the link, this language on the, that's showing on the screen because this is what the city attorney had recommended.
Specifically the 90 feet for non-single-family?
Yep.
All right, Ms. Jensen. Do I need to? Need to restate it in full, then?
Sure. Okay, I move, I make a motion that we forward a positive recommendation to the municipal council for the language. Can I just say currently on the screen or that specifically says "single-family 75-foot lot depth" and "all other permitted uses 90-foot lot depth"?
Yes.
Number two, and then read item number two. Does that?
Yes, perfect.
Okay. Do you want me to read it again?
Please, for the record.
Jeffrey Rans requests ordinance text amendments to the low-density residential and very-low-density residential zones to reduce the minimum lot depth from 90 feet to 75 feet.
And?
Specifically is only for single-family uses.
And other permitted uses are 90 feet?
Yes.
As stated in the revised staff report.
Thank you for filling in the gaps for me.
Thank you. Do we have a second for Ms. Jensen's motion on item two?
Yes.
Seconded by Mr. Knutson. All right, all those in favor of forwarding a positive recommendation is stated in Ms. Jensen's motion on item two to municipal council. Ms. Urquaga?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Ms. Jensen?
Aye.
Mr. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
And Mr. Knutson?
Aye.
Fantastic. Then we will forward a positive recommendation on item two as stated with those modifications to municipal council. Okay, the next item is item three. Item three was for a zone change from RC to VLDR, which would permit the subdivision of the lot. Do we have any further discussion on item three? Comments? Motion? Mr. Anderson?
I'm ready to move that we continue item three as read in by our chair earlier tonight.
Okay, so we have a motion from Mr. Anderson to continue item three. Jeffrey Rans requests a zone change from RC to very-low VLDR to subdivide the lot to create one 5,000-square-foot single-family lot located at 189 South 500 West in the Franklin Neighborhood. Do we have a second for Mr. Anderson's motion to continue item three?
I have a question for Mr. Anderson.
Ms. Urquaga?
I would, I'm wondering why you are looking at this particular item rather than item three as something to continue and what the rationale is for that?
I think item three is a legislative act and I think item four is an administrative act. So, this is really the step where the city has the discretion to to say yes or no. Once the zone change is approved, then all the applicant has to do is meet the basic criteria of the zone. And there's no putting a brakes on, putting the brakes on what they might want to do. And just as a practical matter, I think it's appropriate to talk about, you know, maybe some of the other changes that we discussed relative to the zoning, the language of the zone in connection with the map amendment. You know, maybe rather than to do that with a particular project plan proposal.
Okay, that makes sense to me. And with that explanation, I will second the motion.
Thank you, Ms. Urquaga. So, item three has been motioned to be continued by Mr. Anderson and seconded by Ms. Urquaga. And we'll take a vote on that now. Ms. Urquaga?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Nay.
Ms. Jensen?
Nay.
Mr. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
And Mr. Knutson?
Aye.
All right, so I think we had, if I count correctly, six ayes and two nays. Is that correct? Our. The motion, the motion to continue passes and we will continue item three. Staff, do we want to set a continuation date for that?
Yeah, I, Bill, I don't know about the first meeting in September. Is that two? That seems reasonable. I'm not sure exactly what the date is on that, but I can tell you in just one second. Looks like it'd be September 9th.
And that gives us enough time to notice, correct?
Yes.
Okay, great. Then we will continue item three to September 9th. And then the last item. Item four was a request for the concept plan approval for a two-lot residential subdivision in the VLDR zone. Do we have further discussion or a comment? Or a motion on item four?
I'd be happy to make a motion if no one has discussion.
Any discussion, commissioners? Okay, Ms. Jensen?
I move that we continue item number four. Jeffrey Rans requests concept plan approval for a two-lot residential subdivision in the very-low-density residential zone, which actually is the RC zone right now, located at 189 South 500 West in the Franklin Neighborhood. The continuation is based on having a further discussion about minimum lot sizes and to make his subdivision proposal more acceptable.
Great, thank you. Do we have a second for Ms. Jensen's motion?
I will second.
Seconded by Ms. Urquaga. All those in favor of continuing item four, and I will say to also September 9th, if that gives the applicant enough time to revise the site plan, Development Services?
We're certainly willing to put it on September 9th. Jeff, are you okay? Are you gonna be able to get everything, get a new revised site plan by September 9th?
It sounds probably reasonable. One never knows with site planners how backed up they are. You know, it's kind of yet to be determined. Maybe we, when, maybe we go the next one in September if, this is once a month or is it twice a month we do this?
Twice a month.
September 26th would be your next date.
Or, oh, sorry, yeah, yeah. Thank you. 23rd is actually the next date. I knew that. September 23rd. Thank you for keeping me straight, Mr. Knutson.
It might, I mean, as much as I want this to move forward in an expeditious manner, it might be wise to do the 23rd only because I know a lot of site planners are really maxed out right now and might not be able to make that. Is that something that I can look into and then circle back to you, Brandon? Or do we have to make a definitive right now?
I think it'd be better to be definitive.
Okay. That being the case, why don't we do September 23rd if that is okay with everyone here?
Great. All right, then the motion presented by Ms. Jensen, seconded by Ms. Urquaga, for item four was to continue until September 23rd. All those in favor of continuing item four as so stated, Ms. Urquaga?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Ms. Jensen?
Aye.
Mr. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
And Mr. Knutson?
Aye.
And I just realized I haven't been voting this evening, so, Ms. Jensen, aye. Then we will continue item four to September 23rd. Thank you, Mr. Rans.
Oh, thank you all. Appreciate your input. By the way, my Frida, I probably don't need to be here anymore, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
Y'all have a good evening. Bye-bye.
All right, the next item, there are two related items that I'll read in together. Item five is legislative, item six is administrative. We also received community letters on both of these items. So, if there are any public comments new to be made this evening, if you have already emailed or mailed a comment to Development Services, we are aware of those comments and we have read them as the commissioners. So, item five, Robert Sunderlag requests a zone change from A1.5 to R1, R1.7 to allow for a 40-lot, single-family subdivision for property located at approximately 1164 South 1600 West in the Sunset Neighborhood. And Robert Sunderlag requests concept plan approval, this is item six, for a 40-lot, single-family development located approximately 1164 South 1600 West in a proposed R1.7 zone in the Sunset Neighborhood. And Mr. Larson will present both of these items.
Thank you. So, we do have a proposed, a proposal for a development down the southwest area of the city, kind of south and west of the Footprinters Park, a little ways away from there, south, yes, south and west. Approximately, approximately 1150 South 1600 West. You can see the vicinity map there and the outline of the property in blue there. And I'll take you in a little closer to the property so you know a little bit better, or a closer look at the subject property. So, you've got two properties. They're approximately seven acres each, totaling just over 14 acres. The applicant would like to do, have this property rezoned. Currently, it's, currently it's in the A1.5 zone. If you'd like to go to R1.7. Let me just show you, well, let me just point out a couple of things before I move on from this slide. It'll become more obvious when I show you another map here, but this property right here looks pretty, you know, looks like R1, R1.10-type development. It's actually in an agricultural zone. There is some R1 zoning right in this area. I can't remember if it's 8 or 10. And then there's R8, R1.8 zoning right here. City recently, the last couple of years approved the Kelchaw Lane Development, 30 lots just north of this proposal. Here's an intersection, here's the intersection 1150 South and 1600 West. Look, you're looking west towards the airport. And then here's, here's that intersection now looking north of the road. Got a, oh, I don't know, half mile or so. You'll have Sunset Elementary. Maybe a little off on that, but it's not too far off the road there. So, again, here's zoning map. You can see that the green is agricultural zoning and so the subject property, should have done a different color, outlined that in a different color, but you can, the subject property is out, is right there. You can see that it's surrounded by agricultural zoning. Like I said, that, those homes on the corner, although they're on like quarter-acre lots, they're actually one-acre agricultural zone. You've got some R1 zoning here, Kelchaw, and then I believe there's some other R1 zoning here. Just off the map, Heron's Landing was approved recently by the city. A rezon was approved for R1.7 zoning to stop in this area right here. General plan designation is residential. This is the southwest area future land use map. This map is helpful in, you know, this area of the city is. um, you know, the, this area of the city is, is like the one big portion of the city that hasn't developed, and so the staffs uh, Community Neighborhood Services has a, a map course here that identifies the future land uses for, for this area. Um, you can see uh that the subject land uh is right here, that's uh lines up with uh, so, so basically this map's telling us that, that the plans for residential uh development, uh, the, the, the yellow is synonymous with four acre to unit net density development. Uh, here is a concept plan, uh, you can see the applicant has proposed uh forty, forty lots, most of these, two, twenty-nine of the, of the forty lots are actually nine thousand square feet or larger. Um, there, there's a handful, I think four or so that uh are seven thousand square feet. And then there's uh, about what, uh, seven or so that uh would be um in the eight thousand square foot range. Um. You can see the, the curvilinear nature of the roads, staff suggested uh more of a grid pattern to, for a more efficient use, uh, more efficient uh lot and road patterns, but uh, uh, this is what the applicant, the applicants desires to, to uh have a, a curvilinear uh design. Um, the, this uh map, all this is to show you the all of those lots as near as I can tell, tho- those are the only lots that I'm aware of that don't meet an R one eight or greater standard, all of the, those are the only lots that um are at the R one seven level where they're either at seven thousand square at seven, between seven and eight thousand square feet, or they have a seventy foot uh lot width. Um, I think there's, I think there's only four lots that are in that seven, that seven to eight thousand square foot lot range. I think there's one here that uh, a- anyway, the, the, all of these lots I believe have a seventy, seventy foot frontage roughly, so uh, just for, just for information there. Um, one of the things that's uh, I guess important, uh, you saw the southwest area plan map and the yellow designation for the property, again, um, the idea, the, the, that plan establishes a desire for residential development at four acres per unit net density. So the applicant uh, until a few months ago, wa- was at that four acre per unit net density mark. And then the road standards, uh, twenty twenty road standards uh were approved by the city and that, that changed uh, that, that changed things for him a little bit, you can see on this density matrix, uh, our way area. He was, uh, his uh roads went, uh, he had a road requirement that went from three point two one to four point seven nine. The applicant has uh asked uh for the city to still allow him to develop forty lots, that would put him at four point three net density, just over uh the, the four uh acre lots, or four units per acre. So, that is uh something to consider, uh, staff is uh, I think, uh sympathetic to the fact that this uh, the applicant's been working on this project for, for years now and, and he's getting close to the end, and the road standards changed on him. Uh, not, not to his advantage, so um, I think the, the city still can approve uh the development at that four point three. Uh, I, I'd say that uh, four point three still is in substantial harmony with, with the intent of that map. Um, so again, that, that's, that's the, the rezone is uh is again, one, A one five to R one seven, staff notes that a, a couple of things, this area appears to be an area in, uh, looking at this map, this area seems to be an area in transition, transitioning from agricultural to residential use. Uh, you've got the, the, the uh parkway here, uh, that certainly opened up land for development. In, in, in relation to that, staff notes the the uh short, the shortage of housing stock in, in the city and region, and it feels like this is, it is a good thing, um, the proposed rezone uh to uh residential designation, R one seven zoning. I think staff is comfortable with R one seven zoning uh because of the concept plan that shows that the majority of of those homes are actually more in line with an R one eight or R one ten designation, just a, a few that would be under that. And so staff would uh recommend to the planning commission that they recommend to the city council approval of the proposed uh rezone application.
Great, thank you. Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Larson?
I have a question.
Anderson?
Want me to go ahead?
Please do. Mr. Anderson?
Okay, I'll jump in, just kinda quickly, first of all, uh, the proposed zone change and the development both, I don't have any concerns about it, um, so looking for staff though to give a little bit more background on the calculation of density, kinda net versus gross. If I remember right, that was the topic of a lot of discussion when there was some area planning done for this part of the city two years ago, three years ago, or something like that. Um, has there been any concern expressed so far, and I get that we'll maybe hear more tonight, but about how that's being handled and the idea of changing the zoning, you know, maybe to allow for this number of homes?
So, yeah, that's correct, Mr. Anderson, uh, your recollection is correct. Um, the area plan um for the west side was adopted, uh, it's probably been over, uh, maybe eighteen months ago to two years ago, um, and after that, subsequent to that map adoption, the road standards did change and increased the right of way. Um, you remember that through that discussion of the map adoption, the planning commission and city council thought it would be good to change the density calculation from four units to the acre gross to four units to the acre net. And um, so that means you take the, the road right of way out before you make that calculation. When the city increased the road right of way uh to the sixty-four feet, that takes about thirty-two, thirty-three percent of the property away. So, other developers than this one, this, since this one's been in the process along, this has been kind of an anomaly, but other developers, we've been telling them that four units to the acre net, but we've been allowing them to ask for R one seven, R one eight uh to help them achieve that four units to the acre net yield because that reduced lot frontage makes a difference on your lot yield. So if we told somebody, you're only allowed to have four units to acre net, and that gave them forty lots, if they then tried to lay that out under our R one ten or R one twelve requirements, they wouldn't achieve those forty lots, they'd be even less than that. So recently, we've been telling people that we, staff would support a smaller zone if, as long as they didn't exceed that four units to the acre net calculation. Again, this one's an anomaly because of the time it's been in the process. Did that explanation make sense?
Really appreciate that, perfect sense, yep.
Great, Mr. Knutson?
Uh, I drove through this area, it's not far from where I live. I realized if you go sixteen hundred West, there's Sunset View Elementary. And if you go east on eleven fifty, they're both extremely small roads. I don't know that they can handle, they have no sidewalks, the kids walk down the street. Uh, I don't see how this could go unless the city has uh plans to widen those roads or to expand those roads, 'cause I think the increased traffic will be too much for the area.
Thank you. Mr. Gonzalez?
Yeah, um, so I, I, as I understand, the what's before us today is just the zone change, not necessarily the actual, the concept.
The concept plan is also before us as well.
That's a second motion, yes.
Gotcha, okay.
Ms. Urkiaga?
Um, yes, I'd like to have staff address two issues, um, and I'm just having a brain cramp on one of them, so I'll do the other one, um, we had some, um, oh, it was the leapfrog um development, is this the kind of thing that was previously disfavored? Um, and I'm taking it the city has no issue with that. And then the second has to do with the plumbing issue and the sewers. Um, I know we had to put off, um, and delay development for um sewer development, and this was brought up by some of the community letters. I'd like to have staff address the um adjustments to the current um property that would have to be made to accommodate the current sewer situ- situation versus a future development, um, and as this, as the sewers are extended. Um, so those two things I'd like to hear about.
Um, like David Data weighing on that second issue, uh, he's gonna have more expertise on that than I will, but as far as leapfrog development, I I, I'm not sure that this really qualifies as leapfrog development, you've, you've got uh development kitty corner from this that looks in a whole lot like uh, you know, uh, R one ten uh development, and you've got another development uh less than four hundred feet to the north, that's essentially the same thing, so I don't really think this is is uh really leapfrog development. Uh, I think this, it's clear this area is transitioning to residential and, and uh, so no, I don't think this is leapfrog development.
Okay.
And is Mr. Jay available?
Yes, I am. Would you like me to address those other concerns?
Please, thank you.
So, I, I've got uh written down three things and I'll just go through and if I've missed something that maybe you can tell me what I've missed, the there was reference to the right of way increasing, um, and that, that's true, uh. It was really baffling to us that we had requests from several developers uh to include the sidewalk as part of the right of way, uh, in the past, we have we have put the front edge towards the street as the right of way line, which allowed them to count the sidewalk as part of their setback. Uh, but they said, oh, that's not fair, we should, we should have to own the whole sidewalk, so we did move that, but that was at the request of developers, but it seems as though when they start calculating that out, they may have second thoughts on that, but that's that issue. Uh, the width on sixteen hundred West, uh, Mr. Knutson brought that up. Uh, it is a narrow road, I think that same issue came up with Kelshaw Lane. And uh, Kelshaw Lane has created a uh, a, a path to get up to six south off of sixteen hundred West. And uh, just uh, last year, we as a city put in sidewalk from eleven fifty south up to the Kelshaw Lane, so when uh Century Homes installs that curb and gutter along sixteen west, there there would be a path to go up along that east side, cut up through Kelshaw Lane and get up to six south, so uh, that would be one option. And then uh, the sewer, uh, we're, we're about two years away from having the sewer, excuse me, the sewer, uh, uh, some of the sewer issues resolved so that people can uh continue to develop. But on this particular site, they are right next to the thirty-six inch gravity flow sewer, uh, that intersection of sixteen hundred west and eleven fifty south. So, one of the conditions on them being able to develop is being able to bring their site up high enough that they'll be able to gravity flow that sewer to that sewer that's in that intersection. So that, that would most likely raise that site higher than the surrounding properties. I guess the issue that brings up is uh, probably on the west side, there's going to be an elevation change of approximately six feet. So that brings into question, you know, possible need of retaining walls and stuff to prevent that spill over into other lots uh that are outside of their property boundary, so were there any other questions you had on, on those issues?
Not me.
Does Mr. Anderson raise his hand? No? Okay, it, it looks like we do, do not have any other questions.
I have one question.
Mr. Henry?
Uh, yeah, so on that sewer line, in two years, is this sewer line being replaced lower, or is that thirty-six inch line the only option at this time?
No. Um, so, it, it, we probably need to maybe have a presentation to the planning commission and kinda show you how all that works, 'cause it does get a little, little bit complicated. I don't know if, well, Brandon, you're on, you're not on a live map, so uh, there's actually a lift station west out by the airport that these properties in this area will actually gravity flow out to a lift station to the west. And then it will force main back into this same line right here at this intersection. Uh, uh, it's a, it's a, a really large lift station, a, a regional lift station that will replace like five of our lift stations in Provost, so it, it's uh, well, it, with operation and maintenance costs of lift station, it's a major savings to the city to to centralize those operations, so, so uh the, the gravity flow will go west instead of east right here, and then force main to the east until it hits the gravity flow, I don't know if that makes sense.
Yeah, so I, I guess the question is, um, lifting the entire property six feet, bringing in fill dirt, that's permanent solution to what appears to be a temporary problem with sewer, or will this always be a problem with sewer?
Uh, if, if they were such that they could wait for two years, they would be able to hook on to that gravity flow going west and leave the property at its current elevation.
Okay, and in the interim, if they wanted to develop now, but also not raise the property, could they install a temporary pump station, lift station for their property that would then be removed when the new sewer line came in?
Uh, no, uh, we've had that request, but we don't allow a, a temporary lift station, nor do we allow a private lift station, so we've explored those possibilities, but they're not uh available, so we, we only do city-owned uh facilities and we're moving to more regional lift stations to save money on operation and maintenance. It, it, on average, it costs us about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars per lift station to operate throughout the year, so you can imagine if we're eliminating five of those, that's a, a million dollars a year savings, but of course, we've gotta pay for the new one and, and maintain it, but there is a substantial cost savings by uh eliminating all the smaller ones.
Also thinking about timeline, uh, by the time this gets improved and they get roads and sidewalks and utilities in and start building the first house, are they gonna be pretty close to that two years anyway?
Uh, could be, we've uh had those conversations with other developers out on the other developers out on the north end and they're looking at another phase that they want to start in the spring. But they don't feel like they would have occupancy for about a year and a half after that, which would put us about two years from now. So it, it, it may, it may work out that way. But, uh, what we've been told by the developer of this, they would like to move forward now. And so we were trying to make a solution for them here.
Right.
And Ms. Jensen?
Some of the community concerns were about the road capacity and the fact that it was unimproved for a large portion of this. And you talked to, Mr. Day talked about, um, sidewalks that have been built in certain areas, but I just wanted to clarify, is it the developer's responsibility to extend eleven fifty south and nine hundred west? Um, and if so, does he only have to extend at the length of his subdivision? Or does he have to connect it in with the Lake Shore Parkway? Is that the road it's connecting in with?
Uh, he, he would only be responsible to improve his frontage uh, and, uh, make all of that work. Uh, there, there are, it would probably be safety concerns that may extend beyond that a little bit, but, uh, the, the road capacities, uh, on eleven fifty and sixteen hundred would handle forty lots.
Oh, thank you. At sixteen hundred west, but there's nothing that requires him to continue the road out to Lakeview to give it another access point?
No, but he would, uh, uh, improve it through that, uh, section that they own.
So is there, I feel like it would be wise to have that access opened up. So is there a timeline for that on the new transportation plan? Or is that something that's implied when we approve, um, a development that the city will just pick up the slack there and do their part? Or how do we, how do we ensure that that happens as well?
Yeah, sixteen hundred west, we had anticipated that that would be, uh, completed with development. Uh, it, you know, if that becomes a more, uh, important connection to the parkway, uh, then we could explore options with the city council about maybe that becoming a city project rather than a developer driven connection. But right now it's planned to be a developer, uh, built connection.
So that, that, that properties to the south would be responsible for finishing that when they're eventually ready to develop is what you're saying?
Yes.
Thank you.
Great. Any other questions for staff or Mr. Day? Mr. Henry?
One more quick question. It was mentioned in the, the packet, the, the southwest corner is in a flood zone. What's required to remediate that?
Um, there is, there are flood standards, uh, that, uh, that need to be met. They getting an engineer, having them do an elevation certi- getting an elevation certificate, building above the, the flood, you know, the flood plain. Building above the, 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 there's a key elevation against forty-four ninety-five or forty-four ninety-six. Um, they, I know that Public Works also recommended that the applicant, uh, go in, go to FEMA and get a letter of map amendment or, or letter of map revision. Uh, sometimes that actually, it, it's a little bit more site specific of a, of a review and it may cause that flood zone to, to kind of fall back a little bit. But, um, so that's, uh, the, the, the Public Works Department has been in contact with, with the developer about that issue and has, has recommended that they look into that letter of map revision, or else they'll have to comply with the flood plain requirements of, of the code.
Okay.
Any other questions, commissioners?
And might I say that, that portion, and I, I apologize, I should have put that on there. That portion in the flood plain is just right there, just in the very southwest.
Oh, okay. So it'd be a minor fix.
Well, well, it would, it's on, let me show you on, on that concept plan. It is actually just covers like right here. It lies southwest of my cursor. So everything back this way. So the front third on a diagonal is out of it. The, the nor- northeastern third of the lot, I'd say.
Okay.
Ms. Urquaga?
Um, I would like to know what the neighborhood meetings, um, results were, if you had one of those?
A neighborhood meeting, I went to, I apparently, well, I'll say this, this application, this proposal's been going on for a, a very long time. And so there have been neighborhood meetings that occurred before my time with, with the city, but I did attend one on February, February sixth, twenty twenty. Um, there, there were concerns raised about the built, building up the, the property to, to get this sewer to work, uh, concerns about, uh, uh, sixteen hundred west, but the overall sentiment at the meeting was favorable, uh, for the development. Uh, I, I think that the, the neighborhood chairs said something to the effect that this is the kind of development they want to see in the area. Noting that, you know, there are a few concerns with the sewer and the roads, but uh, it's still hopeful that, that, uh, a, a good development could be constructed there. So that's.
Okay. And I, um, I'd be interested in seeing a live map, if you could bring one up that shows where the sidewalks would be going. Um, that's, uh, since David Day talked about that, I'm, I'd like to know what that path is, but.
See a live map showing you want me to take you up sixteen hundred north? Is that what you're?
Well, he said Kelshaw Lane. I think it was, it went up Kelshaw Lane or whatever. Um, I'm just wondering what that connection is, if it gets children off of sixteen hundred west.
Can you see the Google maps that I'm pulling up?
Uh, no.
Um.
Cause you, if you pull that other map down.
Um, I think I can.
I can see now. Yes.
Okay. Um. So the development sits, sits in this area right here, these two lots. Would you like me to take you up the road?
Um, yes, and, and maybe, um, Mr. Day needs to, um, explain what it was talking about in terms of the sidewalks.
Yeah. So on this street view, you won't be able to see the sidewalks, but once we get up to Kelshaw Lane, you'll, you might see, well, maybe not. Keep going. Maybe switch to, switch to the over, over aerial.
The old area, switch to the air.
Yeah. That image up right now is a two thousand sixteen.
Oh, yes, thank you.
Yeah. So you can see that sidewalk comes up to there. So all of that disturbed land right there is Kelshaw Lane.
Okay.
But if you go up to like nine sixty south, which is a little further up, you can see where the road will stop, go back down, right there. Uh, that cuts across to the east. And then there's another intersection right there. And you go north uh, up, up to six south, and then there we be able to go on sidewalks to the school. So that would be a way safer route for kids to go to school than can, than to continue up sixteen hundred west, because they would have sidewalks in their subdivision and sidewalks along the east side of sixteen hundred west, and then go up through that subdivision to the north. Uh, that would get them off of sixteen hundred.
One quarter mile to go a quarter mile.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, commissioners, any other questions for staff or Mr. Day? If none, I will invite the applicant, Mr. Sunderloch, to address any of those concerns we heard and, uh, talk about his project.
Great. Thank you. I'll ask if you can hear me. Make sure my audio is working.
It's great.
Um, I'm also requesting, am I able to share my screen? It says host disabled participants' screen sharing. I don't know if it's possible. I have some exhibits that might help in some of the concerns that have been brought up today.
Could you, or Rachel, could you give him the ability to share his screen?
Go ahead. You can go ahead and share the screen.
Thank you. Let me know if you can see that. That should be the color exhibit.
Yes.
Great. Thank you. And thank you, um, chairwoman, commissioner, members, commission members, and especially city staff for the, uh, the efforts that have been made on this. Uh, you appreciate Brandon's language in the staff report, uh, using the word tirelessly. We have been at this for quite some time and uh, hopefully the, the timeframe that we've been at this will help explain uh, where we are and, and how we got to where we are. And I wanted to address some of the concerns that were brought up, uh, but also, uh, just introduce the project. Uh, Brendan did a great job and again, appreciate his, his effort on this. Um, we ended up where we are, starting is, is we look at the location, is you're now familiar with where this is. We, we looked at Lakeview Boulevard and the two collector roads, eleven fifty south and sixteen hundred west. Uh, our initial, uh, anticipated development, uh, would, would be a higher density. And, and we really did start out at, at quite a bit higher density, looking at possibility of, of row homes, uh, smaller lots. Uh, and as we continue to work through, uh, the city, working with the neighborhood, uh, we've seen in our application process, we've seen the, the adoption of that west side concept plan, uh, that we have worked with the city on. We've worked with the neighborhood on, we've had, uh, three neighborhood meetings. Uh, and as we've gone through each meeting, we really felt the need to fit the vision that, that the city wanted and also the neighborhood, what the neighborhood wanted. Um, Mr. Pepperoni indicated that, uh, the density calculation, uh, initially looking at gross density on that west side, uh, looking at four units per gross acre, uh, we had gotten to that point, which would have yielded us about fifty-six lots. Uh, and then with the adoption, a recent interpretation of the, we being based on net, uh, that brought us to almost exactly the forty units or forty lots for the development. And we really felt like, uh, through this effort, um, we, we have been meeting the vision that the city has for this zone and this density uh, and the neighborhood as well. And, and we, I feel like we had a very successful neighborhood meeting where, uh, we, we hope to convey that, uh, we took to heart the, the comments and adjusted our site accordingly. Um, so leaving us at the, the concept plan, uh, and if, if there are any questions on, on the density, on how we got there, I'd, I'd love to answer those, but I think that was, uh, very thoroughly addressed. And again, we appreciate city staff's efforts on that. Um, I wanted to, uh, talk about the sewer issue as this has been going on for quite some time. We yeah, clearly there are some decisions that needed to be made on the west side for sewer. We've been, uh, discussing with the city engineering team, uh, how to best treat sewer in this, on this lot, on this, uh, subdivision, uh, anything from pump stations to, uh, temporary facilities to, uh, raising the site to minimizing cover on, on sewer with certain appropriations of of requirements. And, and, uh, we ultimately led to the, the conclusion that we needed to get depth if we were going to make sewer work. Uh, I want to address the question with, um, and when, sorry, when I say depth, I mean, we needed to get the site raised so we could have adequate depth on the sewer. It's a fairly shallow system at the intersection that we need to tie into. So in order to get the depth that we need for the sewer system, we needed to raise the site. And I'd like to address that, uh, but also with the timing. Um, two years, uh, for the pump station to be completed and the force main to be, uh, delivering the, the sewage flow to the treatment facility on the east side. Um, I, I don't know, and I, maybe I'm misunderstanding on that, but I think there's some additional time or effort required to get the gravity line installed in order to serve the lot. So I don't know if that's additional time. And, and David Eck, we can discuss that further because we actually are interested in future phases of, in this area above and beyond this, this project. So we would be interested in staying in the community and, and continuing to work in the community. So we would be interested in, in future solutions. But to answer the, the question, uh, as to timing, uh, we have been at this for about two to three years. Um, and so we, uh, as you, as you know, that, that can, that's a long, that's a long time in the, in the development world and the landowner developers, I should mention, I'm the, the civil engineer on the project representing the developers and landowners. Um, two to three years has been a long go. Uh, and, and again, we, we've worked hard to try to meet what the city envisions for this area, including the sewer needs. Um, and an additional two years would, you know, we would respectfully, uh, request that that's viewed as a, a significant time to, to wait for some additional uh, approvals in order to move forward. And so we are requesting that this does move forward with, uh, a proposed sewer solution that we feel, uh, we've integrated the site to accommodate the sewer solution. Um, and that is by raising the site. Uh, I wanted to show how we had worked out the utility separations. And I know that this is fairly busy, but these gray circles indicate where the crossings for water and sewer are. And those are kind of your critical locations to make sure that you have the separation in your maximum depth through your sewer. We designed the system so that we would minimize, uh, these crossings to the inside of the site. So as we raise the inside of the site, uh, we have the opportunity to drop the site and tie into existing grade, uh, on the perimeter. And that would include maintaining a reasonable, you know, two percent slope, uh, one to two percent slope along sixteen hundred and, sorry, sixteen hundred and eleven fifty, so that we didn't create any artificial articulation vertically, uh, on the roadway system. We do uh, propose raising the site. I think in conjunction with the horizontal curvature of the roads, we feel like that gives some traffic calming, uh, from a planning standpoint, it gives some aesthetics to the, the site. And so that's why we wanted to stick with this. Uh, we also, I wanted to show, uh, what these street grades look like, because I, I think there is some concern that if we raise the site in order to accommodate sewer, uh, that it would create this artificial mound in the middle of nowhere, um, and, and just look to artificially create it and, and be an eyesore. And I, I think contrary to that, I think the, the vertical articulation in the roads offer some character and it, and it allows us to integrate the types of product we wanted to put in, uh, for the development. Um, so I, I did some research and looking around neighborhoods that did a similar in a similar design or similar roadway design in order to get grades up to where they needed to be. Uh, it was mentioned that those grades would come up six to seven feet. I, I hope to convey, and it's always hard through photographs to convey what six feet actually looks like, but I'm standing on a, on a road that's a, you know, an average one to two percent grade. And up to get up the length of one lot, which would be this home, which is this home here, I'm looking from the street up. This, this street rises six feet. And it really is a, it's a, it's a non-obtrusive, non, um, uh, you know, it, it, it really doesn't feel like you're, you're climbing a hill. And so I wanted to show that just to say, you know, what we're proposing is more along the lines of this where, yes, we do raise the site. Uh, and, and we're able to get sewer depth, but we were strategic in that. And, and this situation really only occurs on the perimeter where you know, and this location here, this location here, and around the entrances to eleven fifty and sixteen hundred. So hopefully that conveys again. I know that that's difficult to see, but we don't feel like that's a, a, a difficult thing. Um, the city standards, uh, you know, you have a maximum street grade of twelve percent. Uh, it's preferred to stay at eight, at eight percent, but there is an allowable upon the city approval, uh, twelve percent maximum grade. This would be, you know, less than half of that, that maximum grade. And we certainly don't want to approach maximum grade. There isn't a need to. Uh, but we do feel like we are certainly in compliance with the, the city street grades. Um, so integrating that, uh, system, that sewer system with the roads, uh, we have a, a similar, uh, let me show these. We have the drop basements where we enter the, the fronts of the buildings, fronts of the homes. And as the street grade drops, we have the opportunity to have, uh, the, the lower floor via walkout. And we would certainly look at some aesthetic walls, uh, rockery walls, dry stack boulder walls to pick up some of those grades. That would, that would be an important part of the development. We, we don't, um, we don't anticipate leaving some strange cuts or really steep hillsides. We, we fully anticipate retaining walls where needed on the site. I also wanted to point out one of the concerns, and I don't know whether this is worthy of discussion because it wasn't brought up, but the street frontage along, along 1150 and along 1600, the city was really wanting to look at not creating backyards along the collector roads. And so looking at how we could work with the raised site and create homes that forward face. So you're getting some street frontage or homes that face 1150 and homes that face 1600. And I wanted to show something similar to what this might look like, where you have your home front yards, the sidewalks connect to the pathways to the homes. And, you know, further creates that desired aesthetic that the city was looking for. And so we're wanting to accommodate as well and continue to work with the city.
Those homes, those homes need to face the road, but they're not allowed to access those collector roads.
Correct, correct, yeah. Yep, absolutely. So we would still have the driveways access from inside the lot, but we would be facing the collector roads and no access would be allowed. So again, with the sewer, we feel like we have worked out a solution that integrates the products we would like to propose for the, for the site and doesn't create anything that's too unsightly. And in fact, we feel like it works well and it offers some, you know, some aesthetic to the, to the neighborhood to give some street grades on that. And again, it helps us meet the sewer needs and be able to gravity flow and not rely on any mechanical systems. But again, we would be excited to hear about the prospect of the sewer pump station being online sooner as we, as we continue to look at property in the areas' future phases. I also wanted to, I guess, discuss the 1600 West, the concerns with the width and the size of 1600 West. I think David Day did a phenomenal job explaining how that pedestrian connectivity would be had as we have a fully designed street system with sidewalks and pathways, including a pathway along 1600 and a pathway along 1150. A simple roadway crosswalk would get us to the new recently installed sidewalk by the city, the short distance to the Kelshaw Falls, and really provide that safe pedestrian connectivity up to the north, particularly the school. I know that's been an ongoing concern. And I really feel like the city did a good job putting in the sidewalk here to bridge that gap and create a nice facility for children that might be accessing that road or accessing school through that road. So again, we, we recognize as developers that the city builds streets one development at a time. We certainly aren't trying to overbuild any roads or underbuild any roads. We're, we're wanting to meet the city standards. And again, we've, as discussed with the density, we've complied with the new road standards, wanting to make sure that those are integrated into the project. But recognize that, you know, in order to have a fully functioning 1600 West, development needs to occur. And we're simply doing our part on our frontage to make sure that that connection is done. And we would absolutely hope to see the further south connection back onto Lakeview Boulevard. That will be a great connection for our project, for everybody around. And so I know that the neighboring property to the south, there is not right of way at this point. But as they look at developing their property, we would, we would hope that that connection is made sooner and later, sooner than later, because I know that that will be a nice, a nice feature for any resident in the community. Yeah, I think that covers most of the questions that we've had. I want to leave some time for any additional questions you might have. But again, I appreciate city staff and all of you for allowing me to present and request approval on this.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Sanderloch. Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Sanderloch? Ms. Jensen?
I was just wondering, he had so many good visuals. Can you tell us what you anticipate that southwest corner of your property looking like as far as the elevations go?
Yeah.
That's going to be the one with the most significant wall behind it. So what, what do you envision that looking like?
Let me go. Great, let me go to the preliminary utility plan. You can see, as the grades drop through here, I do want to reiterate this being a Concept Plan. We certainly have some grading efforts that we want to make sure satisfy the city. This is the steepest part as it's currently laid out. We would, we would welcome, you know, discussion with the city to figure out any shallower slopes that we can make on that. I think we will work towards a solution. But even if we have, this is about a 6%, 6.5% grade along this roadway right here. In addition to the visuals here, I looked at a neighborhood that had almost exactly a 6.3% grade. It drops quite a bit steeper down in this area. So I should have cut this image off, but I wanted to give some visual, just the surrounding areas, to see how that might look. This 6.3% grade would be similar to what we would propose in its current configuration. And we could look at, again, lightening that, but it.
It would be draining to the east, right? So the high end would be on the west. Am I understanding that correctly?
Yeah, we, this would be high right here, and then it would drain down and drain down.
Okay.
As you sat high, again, with the Lomar or the floodplain elevation modifications we need to make, we certainly agree that raising the site, we don't want to contend with floodwater. We don't want to contend with any issues that might occur on any lot with floods. And so with the floodplain, so we're proposing bringing this up. And the house would sit high on that road. So your finished floor of your, of your home would, would be closer to the upper elevations. And then you would just drop along the side yards as a lot of daylight basements look where you have that exposed condition.
But it would have a giant wall around the backside of it.
Well, no, because by the time we get here, we're almost to grade here and a little bit above grade here. So by the time, excuse me, but by the time you match, you're, you're matching grades on the back here. You know, a little bit of a drop, but, but nothing significant. You might have some retaining walls up along the roadway here and here that would integrate in with the house. I actually took a picture of a house that did something similar to this, where I would anticipate along the back of the easement here, you would have like a rockery wall that starts a little higher here. You'd have your driveway access, depending on which, which road they wanted to access from. And then from that point, you would have rockery retaining walls or some type of aesthetic wall that supports the structural roadway section. And obviously, that would need to.
Wouldn't you need to have that, that corner that you say is going to be at grade be the higher portion? Because that's the one that's in the floodplain that you want to raise up so that it's.
So, yeah, so we should clarify, the floodplain, it encroaches just barely onto here. So if we raise the site in the corner here by just two feet, we would be out of that floodplain. So the whole.
And your road grades match with that?
Yes.
Okay. My other question was, I'm just worried about setting a precedent for going all the way to R17 from agricultural. And I'm looking at the layout and the few lots that don't comply. And I'm wondering, I know you've already reduced, but would you be completely against, if you took one lot out on that top section and one lot out on the bottom, I feel like all of them could be in compliance with an R18 zone. So it would be more, it would be less of a drastic step from, from the agricultural zoning than it is. I feel like the neighbors and the sewer might be happier with that difference. Throwing it out there, I'm not making a decision. I just was thinking of, my main concern is to jump to something that's a higher density, even though most of the lots aren't a higher density. But it's a precedent, if on a map it says R17, and then someone else comes along and says, well, I want to do the same thing.
Mm-hmm.
In the bigger picture.
Right, yeah, no, and that's a great point. I think the reason we had these smaller lots here, as we look at what product, we were staying very closely tied to the builders it would be on here to really identify what type of building products. I think, you know, we looked at some, some home products and just maintaining some type of aesthetics on the front, as we look at fronting the street and these forward-facing rear-loaded units. We looked at those possibly being smaller units or something that's more in tune with that. It is more of an urban feel where you have that rear-loaded and the street frontage where you have that stoop coming out of the street. And so we wanted to mimic that, keeping those lots small, giving some more area to the inner lots so that we could use the rockery walls and grading and still fit the home products that we want in there and give more room where room is needed for some of the grading efforts that would be had. So that was the reason for some of the smaller lots.
Will those homes on the smaller lots also be smaller? Or would you just expect them to have smaller yards with similar tones?
Yeah, and, you know, the product that we're looking at for this, each one of these lots would be the same that we would look at for an R18. The width and the product that we've identified that would fit on here with the setbacks for the city. We wouldn't be maximizing setbacks by any means when we're in these bigger lots.
The reason I asked is because one of the arguments in favor of, of having it be R17 is that it would give a variety of housing options. But if all the houses are the same size, it doesn't really give a variety of housing options. So I, maybe city can explain if I'm interpreting that incorrectly.
Sorry, if I can take a stab at interpreting, I think you're absolutely right. We, that is the reason we'd have the smaller lots and the bigger lots. We would like to have some, you know, single story. We would like to have some that have a vertical component, some narrower homes with a, certainly a different type of product. So that would be also the size for the varying lots. You know, we see a different product here than here and, you know, down in the south and how we're working.
Thank you.
Great. Ms. Urquaga?
Um, thank you for that discussion about the sewers. That's helpful. Could you talk also a little bit about the stormwater control that you're planning to do? How that works?
Absolutely. In fact, it's interesting. We had initially anticipated doing some common lots in addition to a detention facility. But with the recent city standards, detention ponds no longer being required on residential streets, we would focus on the water quality component, where the storm system would be a traditional storm system, meeting the city requirements. And we would have either a water quality vault or some type of mechanical treatment system that would separate oils and sands prior to discharge into a recently installed storm line in 1600 West that ultimately outfalls, crossing Lakeview Boulevard and into the lake. So the focus is less on detention or retention and more on the water quality. And so we would work with the city on, on any type of standard that would need to be met, whether it be snouted catch basins, localizing the treatment at each catch basin or a single vault system prior to discharge to 1600. But we would just make sure we meet the city's stormwater requirements on that.
So with the discharge down past Lakeview, are you planning to do that trench or is that future development?
Down at Lakeview, it's actually already in. So you have a storm system on 1600, and it discharges to a system that already crosses Lakeview. So we would just be tying into that system. And understanding is that it was sized, it was oversized as part of the Kelshaw development that was put in. And it was oversized to accommodate future needs that the city had, so.
Okay, good, thank you.
You.
Any other questions, commissioners? I'm not seeing any, so I would like to open up items five and six to public comment at this time. And again, we did receive several letters. And if we could put the public comment slide up.
Someone.
And if Ms. Nah could keep, keep time for us, that would be great.
All right.
No public comments at this time, probably another 20 seconds.
Great, thank you.
Okay, no public comments.
Thank you. All right, we will close items five and six to public comment at this time. And I'll turn it back over to the commissioners for further discussion. And just a reminder that item five is for zone change and item six is for the Concept Plan. Commissioners? And we can put the, the project slide back up if you like.
Thank you.
Yes, Ms. Jensen?
I'm just concerned, like I stated in my, in my question to Mr. Sanderloch, I'm concerned about the R17 zoning, even though I understand the staff's logic in making that acceptable. I feel like it sends a message of what we expect and it interprets the general plan, expectations for that area in perhaps a dangerous way for future development. So maybe that's what we want. Maybe we want it to be more, more density. But I, I felt like it wasn't as gradual of a change to the area. Does anyone else have an opinion on that?
I'll weigh in. I don't have a problem with the density at all. I did sit in on some of the neighborhood sessions for their Southwest Neighborhoods Plan. And the four units net per acre was pretty, it was, it was agreed on across the board. And this certainly, 4.3, it was four, now it's 4.3. And I think Mr. Sanderloch has been working pretty steadily with city staff. This project's improved a lot since the first time I saw it. And, and I appreciate that we have a well-connected grid. Even though there's a curve in it, the curve does provide some aesthetics to the site.
I love the fact that it's not a grid. I think that's a nice, a nice touch.
And yet, it's still connected and it allows for future connections, so.
Yeah, that, that was my only concern, was the message that it sends.
Mr. Henry?
Yeah, so I don't have any issue with the density as well. I think four units to the acre, I think, is as low as we should go in an area that is becoming more urbanized. And, and just thinking about the future cost of maintenance of these roads, the more density we can get in there, I think, the better. I mean, we got to plow these roads every winter. We've got to replace them every 15 to 20 year, or resurface them every 15 to 20 years. I'm not concerned about the density. I also want to, want to mention that I love how this project is so permeable. There's a lot of connections to future development beside it. There's no dead-end streets, given that it is in the middle of land that will be developed eventually. As well as Tali's comment about not ramping up the density so quickly. These types of developments last forever. It's rare that a parcel like this will ever densify when everything around it may go denser. And so I'm not concerned at all about the density on this. And I think it is a pretty, pretty amazing plan. A little concerned about some of the curves where they meet other roads, but obviously, they'll have to meet city standards when they get to the plat, so I'm not concerned.
Any other comments, commissioners? Ms. Urquaga?
Um, I'm curious about the traffic on 1600 West. And how, how many additional trips per day is a development of this size expected to put onto those roads in addition to what is already there?
David, could we have your answer for that one?
Mr. Day?
Uh, yeah, so, so 40 lots would be about, oh, let's just say 450 trips out of that development. A, a peak hour would be about 45 cars. A peak hour would be about 45 cars in the peak hour, which is a car about, well, a car about every minute and 20 seconds. So I don't know, it's pretty low. And it would be a lower volume than you see when there's a softball game at the foot printers.
Okay, I do suspect that there would be a lot of families, possibly carpools, driving their kids to school. And so that is a bit of a concern for me. But I'm not sure that it's a deal breaker. And I know that Mr. Knudsen had some concerns there, and I kind of like to hear those at some point.
Mr. Henry?
Just one quick question. Does anybody have a distance from this development to the elementary school? What is that distance?
Oh, I looked it up and I do not remember, but I can just see.
10 blocks.
This is roughly 10 blocks. Let me.
So the elementary's on 600, so it would be 16, that would be 10 blocks. 20 blocks in a city mile.
If you can stand by for just one moment, I'll give you a rough estimate here.
Mr. Sunderlich just told us it's 2,600 feet.
That sounds about right.
So about half a mile.
It's about double that if you go through Kelshaw.
So it's almost to a point where most kids would rather ride a bike than walk. The strong ones are going to walk and mostly the older kids. I couldn't see a, you know, first or second grader walking that far or even a parent letting them, even if the road was complete. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I just, what Mr. Sunderlich said is right, 2,650.
Any other questions, comments? Anyone ready to make a motion yet?
I have a question.
Yes, Ms. Jensen?
Sorry, I let go. Thank you. On the findings of fact, on page two of item number six, the third finding says if the zone map amendment and concept plan are approved, the applicant would still need to obtain plat approval for the development. Details will be required at the plat stage. So my question is, if further details and review determine that changes need to be made, does the applicant have to go through concept plan approval again? Or can he change things as long as the density that is along with this concept plan doesn't increase?
I like what you said on the latter. If he, that concept plan would allow him to make some revisions and stay within that density that was approved by the council.
So we're not putting ourselves in a dangerous place where anything could happen if the concept plan needs to be modified?
That's not my understanding, no. I believe that we have some flexibility to work with that as long as it stays within the density.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions, commissioners, discussion? You're being very shy tonight. I'll just start by saying I would support a positive recommendation on five and an approval of item six. That's my position at this point.
I would say that I like this plan. And it seems to fit with the future development of that area that the city has planned. The timing is a little bit unfortunate, but I can understand where the developer's coming from, that they've been working on this a long time. And I like what they, their vision is of the elevation. So in general, I feel like approval is the right thing to do. But I'm also, I just have a couple of hesitations here, which I don't think are insurmountable.
Any other comments?
I like the plan too. I'm still caught up on the message it sends to go R17. So that's my only, my only hangup. I love everything that's about it.
Mr. Anderson?
I think I'm ready to make a motion.
Please.
Item five. You do a great job of filling in what I leave out. So I'll move simply that we recommend that item five, the proposed zone change, be approved. And I'll mention as well that I do appreciate the concerns that have been raised. And I think they're valid, but yet I think that this proposed zoning and the development as designed would be great additions to this part of the community. And I guess the benefits in my mind for me outweigh the concerns.
Great, thank you. So just to restate, Mr. Anderson's motion is to forward a positive recommendation to municipal council for item five. Robert Sunderlich requires a zone change from A1.5 to R1.7 to allow for a 40-lot, single-family subdivision for property located at approximately 1164 South 1600 West in the Sunset Neighborhood. Do we have a second for Mr. Anderson's motion?
Also, I can.
Seconded by Mr. Henry. All those in favor of a positive recommendation on item five to municipal council? Ms. Urquaga?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Ms. Jensen?
Aye.
Mr. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Knudsen?
Aye.
And Ms. Jensen, myself, aye. So that is six in favor and two opposed. So the motion passes and we will forward a positive recommendation on item five to municipal council. Our next item.
Did you need a vote again, Deborah?
I'm sorry?
Did you vote also?
I did. Item six is for concept plan approval. Do we have further discussion or a motion on item six? Mr. Anderson?
I'm ready to make a motion.
Please.
And I don't have my agenda up at the moment. Just a quick bit of help. Are we making a recommendation on this? We're not, are we on the concept?
No, this is for approval.
Okay, thank you.
Or disapproval.
Okay. Again, simply put, I move that we approve the proposed concept plan associated with item number six.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Anderson has made a motion that we approve item six. Robert Sunderlich requests concept plan approval for a 40-lot, single-family development located at approximately 1164 South 1600 West in a proposed R1.7 zone in the Sunset Neighborhood. Do we have a second for Mr. Anderson's motion?
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Jones. All those in favor of approving item six, Ms. Urquaga?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Ms. Jensen?
Aye.
Mr. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Knudsen?
Aye.
And Ms. Jensen, myself, aye. So again, we have six in favor and two opposed, so the motion passes, item six is approved. Thank you, Mr. Sunderlich.
Thank you all very much.
And we still have remaining items seven through 12. So I am going to call a quick break for, let's say, 15 minutes. So we will adjourn for 15 minutes. It is now 8:35 PM. And if you will all please be back within 15 minutes. Thank you. I'm sorry.
I know.
You make such a good point. The data on the iPhone that I know doesn't drop. Issues get running and running and racing.
Two, you all have a bitter round of weekly to first. We'll step on the bag to end the ballgame. Ballgame over. Yankees win. Ah, Yankees win. They win it six to three in a game that had 14. Yikes. For the Yankees that won two in a row, they go to 12 and six. How bad in the 16th inning? I think so. It'd be 40 and 20. In the inning, one run, two hits and two left. Six parade, three. Back to the start of the game. The WFAA has your Yankees radio network driven by G. Spectrum Mobile is now the fastest growing mobile provider in the nation, growing faster than Verizon and AT&amp;T and even growing faster than T-Mobile. It's easy to see why. Spectrum delivers the fastest overall speed and is the most reliable local service coast to coast. There are no contracts, added taxes or fees.
I'm here, Deborah. Just so you know. Thanks, Lisa. I see you. We're counting down by the seconds here.
Like I need some confetti or something.
All right. Break is over. Commissioners, I will call the hearing back to order. It is 8:50 PM August 12. So the next item on our agenda is legislative. Item seven. Barton Fouts, Foots is requesting amendments to section 14.50, parentheses, 2.030, 14.50, parentheses, 2.050, and 14.35.050 to allow for an additional dwelling unit located at 670 North 800 East in the Pro A2 Zone. This is in the Joaquin neighborhood, and Mr. Ardmore will present item seven.
Thank you. First, I just noticed notice language says 1435050. That should be 36, the non-conforming chapter. So let's be aware of that. Let me go into the amendments. If you can see these, I know it's pretty small, but again, they were in your staff reports. So the first two amendments are dealing specifically with the Pro Zone that this property lies inside of. The first amendment is adding the uses of multifamily dwellings, which is defined by Pro to be three or four units, apartments, which is five or more, and batching apartments. So that first amendment is to add those three uses to the permitted use list of the Pro Zone. The second amendment within that Pro Zone is to allow, edit text in the non-conforming section of that zone. Edit it to say that you can transition from one permitted use in the zone to another without being subject to the other standards of the zone. Now, the third amendment that's being proposed would be a citywide effect. In the non-conforming chapter, the applicant is proposing to add a new subsection to allow enlargements of multifamily dwellings that do not meet minimum side door requirements. So that'd be a whole new subsection of the non-compliant structures that would affect multiple zones. Now, reading through the amendments, we really need to focus down, I think, on what the amendments are trying to do. So I'm going to go more specifically into the property itself that the applicant owns and the reasons he's trying to get these amendments passed and kind of the history of the property. So this first slide is a couple aerials and then a street view of the property. So in 2017, you could see the five paved parking spaces. Here is one in the carport. Here is one. And then he has three paved spaces on the south side. You could see a car is parked in the landscape front yard at the time of the aerial. And in between 2017 and 2019, that front yard area was paved to provide more hard surface parking for his tenants. That just gives you an idea of what the house looks like in case anybody didn't have a chance to go by the home, built as a duplex. And here are images that I took last week of the pavement in the front yard. So we put asphalt down and then put on this steel plate to allow access into that. That's not permitted by itself. There is a code standard that only allows a 35-foot curb cut for any type of dwelling. But for the dwelling itself, the city has a pretty deep history on this property with zone verifications, rental licenses, enforcement. So this first one is 1996. So a zoning officer at the time established that though the parking, these five parking spaces shown on this 2009 site plan, it was the same in 1996. Though they're non-conforming, they were recognized as legal non-conforming spaces. So the city in 1996 gave the property right of five off-street parking spaces to the duplex. And then in 2009, there was a zone verification done at request of just the applicant at the time. Those zone verifications are kind of regular through the zoning office to give you the legal use, occupancy, zoning, parking. And you could see that it's a legal two, non-conforming two-family dwelling with nine allowed singles and five parking spaces, non-conforming. And that is repeated here in the 2014 zone verification letter. And then if you go back to 2004, when the Pro Zone was adopted, you can see, so through the center of the block is what's been developed. But you can see that they did have a concept plan for the entire block of kind of continuing that pattern and making it kind of this tied-together network of open space and condos through the block. And then I've just attached that kind of explanation for his reason. So as Steph looked at this request, I'll go back up to the amendments, because that's really what we're looking at. As Steph looked at this request, public purpose could be providing more housing. It's a noble purpose that staff would typically support. But we felt in this case that it did not best serve the public purpose. The proposal in front of you did not serve that, because the property again is already, it's underparked already. There's legal issues with this additional parking that's been provided to bring it up to the seven that the applicant will speak to. But even with that, it's just an underparked property. To make all these changes in our code, one of them citywide, to add a third unit, we didn't feel was appropriate. I think it makes it difficult for, more difficult for the property and for the block to redevelop as the Pro Zone intended. And that's why Steph has given a negative recommendation on this particular ordinance amendment. And that's all I have.
Thank you. All right, Commissioners, questions for Steph? On item seven. Ms. Jensen.
I wondered if we should even be talking about granting changes to a property when it's already not conforming and has made unauthorized improvements. I'm just wondering if that's a thing that should be considered in this. Will we go any further?
Mr. Ardmore, do you have any response to that?
I think our opinion is that it shouldn't go any further. Of course, the applicant has the right to go in front of the city council with this proposal and get a decision, but the staff is under the opinion that these amendments, these ordinance amendments should not be granted.
Thank you. Mr. Anderson?
Well, I'm embarrassed to ask this, but just to clarify, right now, the property is approved for use as a duplex, right? So what we're talking about is adding a third unit to the property?
That's correct.
Thanks.
And under the current conditions, adding that third unit, obviously, that paved section of the front yard that they're using for parking is not conforming or not legal. So how would they be able to accommodate parking for a third, yet another unit?
That's a great question. I think that should be adjusted at the applicant when it comes time for that.
Right.
Is that map, where would the third addition, the new addition be?
In the garage.
In the garage.
Is that Mr. Knudsen?
He answered my question. I was just asking Aaron where the third unit would be located.
Great, thank you. Mr. Henry?
Just looking for more clarification. So half the block has been redeveloped, and there was a plan involving this. Could you just clarify a little bit what was done with this plan?
Yeah, so when the Pro Zone was adopted in 2004, this was the concept with that zone change. All that's been developed so far are these three buildings here and these three buildings here in the parking lot, so the central part of the block. The rest has been left as is.
And where is the subject property on this map?
It's on this corner right here.
That corner there, okay. So the zone applies to that property even though no redevelopment has been, has happened?
Right. I can bring it up on the map if that'd be helpful.
Yeah, that would be good.
Can you see that?
Yes.
Okay, so did somebody buy the whole lot property at one time and then sold off pieces after they developed just part of it? Or how did we get to this point?
No, the developer just had these portions, but zoned the entire block with anticipation that it would go that way eventually.
Okay, thank you.
And if I'm looking at the Pro Zone concept plan, the garage itself looks like it's a parking lot. Is that correct? If you kind of zoom in over there, isn't that parking space in between those two? Isn't that where the garage is? Or am I misreading the map?
Um, you know, it looks like where the house is would be landscaping and it's hard to say with that.
That structure is the duplex, right? Or are there buildings?
So the duplex is right on the corner. And I think if we look at the concept plan, it really is hard to tell. I think a lot of that property would be the edge landscaping here, and maybe some of it comes up into this area.
Okay, so the parking area to the north of that is actually a different lot?
Yeah, I think that's more central.
Okay.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Yeah, with the lot as it sits today, are there any percentage requirements for landscaping and as it sits today, is it in conformance with that?
So the whole thing is non-conforming to the zone, because it's a Pro Zone and that part hasn't redeveloped yet. The duplex and all of its different standards are just not conforming to the zone. So it's legally non-conforming. Grant, I'll live in.
Yeah, I guess. Yeah, I guess my comment would be to expand, yeah, the nonconforming use and without addressing other issues like landscaping, and it would be a concern for me.
And the future land use plan and the general plan shows this is high-density housing, does it not?
It does.
Yeah, so this would not achieve that end?
Correct.
Any other questions for staff? Commissioners? Ms. Jensen?
I just was noting on the last page of the staff report for item number seven, it says, in the last paragraph of the first section, it says, "Existing nonconforming structures and properties would only be able to transition to a more intense use without complying to new development requirements if there is adequate structural space and parking available in conjunction with the existing nonconforming structures and properties." I feel like this is the applicant's purpose statement, and right there, it negates the request, because there isn't adequate structural space or parking available. So that was just, I think that's what we're all seeing with our eyes and hearing the numbers dictate to us, but he seems to have negated his own request in that statement.
Mr. Anderson?
There we go, thank you. I think this might be a little out of line. I tend to agree with Commissioner Jensen. I'd love to dive into the hearing and, you know, hear from folks and just maybe be ready to move on with this a little bit sooner than later.
All right, hearing none, I will invite the applicant, Mr., I'm sorry if I'm mispronouncing your name, is it Fouts?
Fouts.
Fouts, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your time. This has been a little bit of a frustrating exercise for me. Just a little history and a little background, I bought this property back in 2014. And as we moved forward with it, I was comparing notes with a friend of mine who has a house 300 feet away that has three addresses, very similar configuration. His is zoned as a triplex with a converted garage. The one thing that, some of the missing information that you have here, I did, I don't know, Aaron, if you've got that one letter that was sent to me in 2018, I don't know if you can put that up, or I can put it up, where we have the confusion about the parking. I emailed it to you a couple hours ago, just in case. I haven't seen it.
You know, a couple hours ago, I probably don't have it in the slides.
Well, if I can share my screen in a minute, I'll show you. But anyway, long story, just, I started talking to my friend, and he said, "Well, I don't see why you can't do it, you're so similar," even though we are different zones, ProZone, he's in an RC zone. But it being nonconforming, we, I started talking to community development, and specifically, it was Brian Maxfield that I was working with, who, of course, everyone knows is retired. We had conversations on and off about various language and where to do it, and maybe some of the purposes of it, until we settled on something right around the end of June. And in fact, going into 14.36 was it his suggestion, because he didn't want to duplicate nonconforming language within a ProZone and have it, have there be duplicate language in the citywide ordinance. I can see my mistake in retrospect was, since Brian retired right after that, right as I submitted it, that I didn't really have a chance to work with Aaron and get his perspective on any of this. And if I can share my screen, let me just show you, this was not a purposeful thing in terms of the parking. Let me get right here, it's coming up.
No, are you gonna get him for that?
I'm gonna just show him that one letter, I've just gotta get to it. Okay, after I did the parking, and I realize now in retrospect, I mean, I was cleaning up a dirt patch between two already nonconforming parking strips and making it a lot cleaner. People were parking on it anyway, so I paved it, I did. But then I approached community development and talked to, I think it was Jason Richards, that's who I've got the emails from, and said, "Look, I've got this. The parking has now been changed to seven, and this is what we've got going on." And he said, "Well, send me site plan." So I did, and got all the measurements right, so that according to what he told me I needed to do. And, sorry, those are just pictures of the converted garage that's been that way for 30 years. And then I got the rental dwelling disclosure document that shows me that, in my mind, and I'm not a pro at this, I've got seven legal parking spaces for the property. You know, if I would have, I just found out about this discrepancy between the city's official and what I thought was official on July 20th, which was nearly three weeks after I submitted the ordinance text amendment proposal. And so I kind of, horses got switched on me in midstream, felt a little bit blindsided, didn't know that this was an issue, because for the last two years, I felt like I had the legal parking to move forward, because I realized you have to have at least 80%, 85% parking for your units. I wouldn't have applied for this if I knew that there was this kind of an issue. So you can say, "I'm sorry, wish I didn't do it, wish I'd gone a different way," but here we are. Aaron did suggest that we see what the planning commission says, and so that's kind of where I'm at. As far as adding one unit, making it more difficult for a property accumulator to come in and buy all the properties, I guess I just don't see the math on that. It's just, if the property's gonna be nonconforming for a little, for a while longer, until such time as someone can buy those five separate properties, why not take something and make it a little bit nicer and make it useful? But that's kind of where I'm at, and, but obviously defer to any suggestions, I wouldn't mind that. Yeah, I just feel like, kind of went, spent four or five months working with Brian Maxfield, you know, hashing it out, figuring it out. Obviously, he didn't, he didn't check on the official status of my parking. And so officially, I have five spaces. Functionally, I have seven. And just, you know, we can figure out if there's any purpose that I can use for that other than storage. You glimpse to some of it, it is, it is a converted apartment. There was one suggestion about maybe switching it back to parking. We'd have to do a whole structural analysis of that, whether, you know, after 30, 40 years, it can handle moving a car in and taking out all the tile and whatnot, and then what do you do with that basement section? It's in there. It's a two-level, it's, there's a basement section in that garage, and then the main level. And so it needs to be updated if we're ever to be used as a unit, but it certainly could be done. But you have to kind of look at the big picture, and I understand now in retrospect how the citywide amendment maybe wasn't the best idea. But I was kind of following Brian's lead on that, and he said, "Oh, I think you need to work on this section." So I understand, probably lesson learned.
All right, thank you, Mr. Fouts. All right, I don't see any questions at this time. I will open up item seven, the public comment. If we could have the public comment screen displayed, please. And have we received any written comments on this item? I don't recall seeing any.
We did not receive any.
There are no public comments at the moment, another 30 seconds.
Great, thank you. Great, thank you so much. All right, item seven then is now closed to public comment, and I will turn the discussion back over to the planning commissioners. Any questions for Mr. Fouts or staff? Any comments? Mr. Henry?
When was it again that this became a ProZone? What year was that?
It was 2004.
2004, okay. And then Mr. Fouts purchased the property in 2014, and the garage was already converted, but is the garage considered a legal dwelling at this point?
It is not.
So only the home as a duplex is considered a legal dwelling?
That's correct.
Okay.
It does have an address with Provo City Power and with the Southwest Gas. So someone, probably before it was rented out, I don't know, someone used it as a mother-in-law quarters. If you look at the age of the existing decor, I would say it's probably at least three years old.
Mr. Anderson?
You're on mute, excuse me.
On mute, please, Mr. Anderson.
Boy, that's embarrassing, sorry.
We'll do it.
I, you know, kind of along the same lines for Mr. Ardmore, as I'm understanding it, Provo has never recognized that third unit as a legal dwelling unit. Is that correct, or?
That's correct.
Okay.
So how does that work with the new policy, or the policy that was introduced a couple of years ago, that all rental properties have to have a signed agreement with the tenant, and that be provided to the city?
I believe that's the document that Mr. Fouts was showing, was that the city provided him with a document that said-
For his tenants.
For his tenants, that said it had seven parking spaces. So-
That's how I understood it.
That's, that was obviously an error, and two city departments need to be talking to each other, or working off of similar records. Mr. Fouts, I appreciate that you understand that the citywide amendment is kind of a sticking point. I'm uncomfortable making that kind of a change for the entire city of Provo.
Well, and in retrospect, I would go back and just say, you know, forget about the duplicate language, I would keep it within the ProZone language, since the ProZone's fairly limited. But it was suggested to me, and I'm not the expert, this isn't really what I do for a living, but it's something that we thought we'd try to maximize the use of the property since so many things were already in place.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments, Commissioners? Any thoughts about a motion on item seven?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I'm ready to make a motion.
All right, it looks like we had one comment from Ms. Jensen. Ms. Jensen, did you want to weigh in before that motion is made?
Yeah, I just wanted to talk about the nonconforming use. I think maybe we're all thinking this, but perhaps just to state it, that allowing a nonconforming use is a courtesy to keep them from being squeezed out of the zone, but allowing them to make huge modifications from their nonconforming use should require them to step into a conforming status. It's just, that's my opinion, but that's what I understand, that nonconforming status is kind of a courtesy, it's not an open door for anything you want to do while you're still there. So I don't know if that's something anyone wants to comment on, or if that's just something I feel better for having said.
If I can just address that a little bit, the whole idea in here was actually not to make any structural changes to anything on the property, was simply to take something that basically existed the way I found it, and then to use it. But there would be no structural changes to anything that I proposed.
Right, and I understand that, it just, the change that happens is it essentially becomes a more densely used property, so that does modify the nonconforming status a little bit. Thank you.
Right. Any other comments, Commissioners, before Mr. Anderson makes a motion?
I want a no button, so that we can all click and say no.
Well, contact Zoom over that. All right, Mr. Anderson?
Once again, thank you. My reasons for this, really, they're numerous, I agree with, I think, where other Commissioners have gone in their questions and some of their comments. That being said, I move that we recommend that item number seven, the proposal to amend various sections of municipal code, be denied.
All right, I will state your motion. Item seven, Mr. Anderson's motion is recommending that we forward a negative recommendation to municipal council. Barton Fouts is requesting amendments to section 14.50, parentheses 2.030, 14.50, parentheses 2.050, and 14.36.050, to allow for an additional dwelling unit located at 670 North 800 East in the Pro A2 Zone Joaquin neighborhood. Do we have a second for Mr. Anderson's motion?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Knudsen. All those in favor of a negative recommendation to city council on item seven? Ms. Urquaga?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Ms. Jensen?
Aye.
Mr. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Knudsen?
Aye.
And myself, Ms. Jensen, aye. So that's unanimous, that is a negative recommendation on item seven to municipal council. Thank you, Mr. Fouts.
Thank you.
All right, commissioners, we have a decision to make. We have, one, two, three, four more items, actually five items left on the agenda. It is now 9:25 PM. We have the ability to decide to hear one more and adjourn at 10:00 PM or keep going. So I will ask you to vote on continue or adjourn at 10:00 PM or thereabouts after the next item. Ms. Urquaga?
Keep tapping the button. I would adjourn at 10:00.
Okay, Ms. Jones?
Adjourn at 10:00.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Uh, adjourn at 10:00.
Ms. Jensen?
I think I'd like to keep going and just get it over with.
Button for punishment.
Ms. Henry or Mr. Henry?
It'll just pile on somewhere else if we don't.
Mr. Henry?
I vote to continue.
Mr. Anderson?
I don't want to complicate things, but I'd say let's not start a new item after 10 o'clock, which might be what you had in mind anyway.
Mr. Knudsen?
Adjourn at 10:00.
Okay, and I'll vote to adjourn at 10:00 as well. So the adjourn at 10:00s have it. We will adjourn at 10:00 or thereabouts. We'll hear one more item. Because then the last three are all related. Or the last two, the next two are related. So let's proceed.
Excellent decision.
All right. Item number eight. Alex Nodich requests project plan approval for a new airport terminal building located at approximately 1300 South Lakeview Parkway in the planned industrial commercial or PIC zone. This is in the Provo Bay neighborhood and Mr. Ardmore will present item eight.
Thank you. So here we have the site plan overlaying on the airport property as it would be built. This, just to give history, funding came through for this airport expansion to be able to create a new passenger terminal area and expand the number of gates that the Provo Airport has in the, in Provo City's goals to expand the airport and provide more service. The site plan, when you zoom in on it, it would access off Lakeview Parkway here. It'd be a one-way route. You'd have access to parking for long-term parking. You'd have a pickup drop-off area in front of the terminal building, staff parking and, and short-term parking in these two areas. As you zoom in further to the floor plan, you could see the main entry here, check-in areas, security. You've got a couple of commercial spaces here and here and some different types of lobbies. And then the main gates, waiting areas here with your north and south baggage pickup areas. So that's the first floor. The second floor is a future expansion area to be determined as Mrs. states. The elevations provided by the applicant. So this is what you'd see from the parkway. This is what you'd see from the tarmac. And then the north and south elevations here. Pretty brief presentation, I know. But staff supports this project plan approval. It meets the zone, it meets the general plan, it meets administration's plan to kind of enhance our airport as a, as a draw for the city. So staff supports this proposal.
Great, thank you. Commissioners, any questions or comments on? For Mr. Ardmore? Ms. Jensen?
Mr. Ardmore, do you have a map that shows us how this site plan corresponds with the terminal and the existing flight school and everything that's already there?
Yeah, so you can kind of see that. I could bring up the GIS map. Kind of see Skyline Drive here in the southernmost hangars that are existing currently. So let me bring up the map for you just to get a little better picture on it. Am I sharing the screen or the PowerPoint? Hold on.
Bringing up that broader map was going to be my request.
Okay, here you go. So currently you access the airport here for the north on the Lakeview Parkway. And passenger terminal is here. And the parking lot is here. So it's pretty kind of awkward and minimal at the, for the time being. So the expansion would happen down here in this area where you, if you drove by today, you'd see Phil being brought in anticipation of this right now. But here's those, those two term, hangars that are shown on the site plan. And the access would be here and it would move south and go over the moat here and back into the parkway here. So it'd take up kind of this whole area.
So would the, would it connect to the previous terminal at all or would the old terminal not be used for commercial use anymore?
Right, they'd repurpose that building.
And so it won't, it won't be weird that there's the flight school and everything in between. It will just be its own airport?
Yeah, it'd be its own ingress and ingress just for commercial flights.
Okay. I'm assuming that river there, the wetland area, is that going to have to be preserved still?
So that created some, some interesting difficulties as they laid out the site. I know the applicant can probably speak to that. Brian Torgerson from engineering department was involved in that. And how they're going to have to address that and kind of leave that natural area as it is and kind of just bridge over it on both of these accesses. They can speak to that better.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? All right, seen none. I will invite the applicant to answer any questions they heard. Mr., is it Nodich? Nodich?
Yes, yes, Nodich. If I could share my screen, I can so this is, this is kind of a, just a more colorful exhibit to what we had here. So to answer the question on the, on the wetlands, the wetlands are delineated in this, in this exhibit in blue. And when we did our wetland study, the, the wetlands were classified as low quality. So we, as long as we weren't disturbing more than half an acre of these low-quality wetlands, we didn't have to do any sort of mitigation for disturbing those wetlands. So that's, we were able to, using some, some clear span structures and then just reducing our limits of, of construction, we were able to stay under that half an acre. And it also comes into play, the, the airport moat is considered the waters of the US. So that, that also fit into the, to the calculation for that half an acre. We, we had to include the disturbance to the waters of the US in that, in that less than half an acre disturbance. So we're at like 0.45 acres of disturbance between the wetlands and the waters of the US that we're crossing with that, with that moat. And then to expand on what's already been talked about on the site, the airport itself has, in the last five years is, you know, tripled in, in deployments. They're at right now about 100,000 deployments. So the, the overarching theme of this project is to meet the needs that, that currently, that the airport currently has and also look forward to allow for easy expansion when, when the airport grows even more. So to the, kind of the west side here, there's, there's plans to expand the parking lot if it needs to. The building is, is such that we can expand to a total of 10 gates. So it expands to the north and to the south to accommodate an additional six gates to what we are currently showing in this, in this first phase of construction. And then just to give you an idea of maybe a a little bit, a prettier rendering of what we have. MHTN is, is the architect on this project. I'm with JAVIation, we're the, kind of the program manager for it. James Knight and Lincoln Murphy are on the line tonight as well. So they can kind of talk about the aesthetic of the building, what we were going for as, as far as that's concerned. And how it's kind of developed to what it is today and what's shown in these, in these renderings. So James, you want to talk to that?
Sure. Yeah, so the building, of course, was, the design of it was based primarily on the, on the, the needs of the airport. So starting at that point, making sure that it was functional, that it had enough seating for full capacity of four aircraft at 150 seats each. And then had some room to grow inside. As previously discussed, the second level can be finished out with future airline offices, airport offices. And when the scanning operation, the TSA checkpoint needs to grow, TSA can go upstairs as well. So those things have been accommodated. And then when the TSA checkpoint grows, most likely that means that we've also put an addition onto the north or south ends of it with three additional gates on the north and the south. So a total complement of 10 gates when it's fully built out. The design of the building came about in a couple of different ways. Number one, we had a meeting with the mayor and, and others of her staff to look at what a, a building of, that says Provo would look like. For example, a visitor coming to Provo, this might be the, you know, the first impression I get. And so we were looking at things like the, the red brick of downtown Provo and painted steel, exposed steel. And just the, the scale of it. Inside is a, is a streetscape with storefront windows for, not only for the concessions, but also to give the appearance of, of a, of a streets, downtown Provo streetscape. The, the front entry, as you see here, there's a main access with tall windows that goes all the way through the building. The tall windows will give great views to White Mountain. And then actually the, the angle of the entry is angled such that it's kind of pointed towards Tempanogus. And then it's windows all across with some, some frit that will help keep the sun down, keep the sun from heating up the space too much, both on the east and the west sides of the building. So as I stated before, a black painted exposed steel angle of the roof kind of signifies a few things. Airplanes taking off, the, the desire to have a taller space at the entry and, and not needed at the north end where the ticketing is. And just a kind of dynamic movement appearance. And Steve Gleason also mentioned it kind of looks like one of the mountains up there next to White Mountain. So we'll have canopies out in the front. And we, again, we've taken into account how many people, both now and in the future, may be dropping off and picking up at the terminal. Appreciate the time to present this.
Great, thank you.
Is, is there any questions from members of the commission or city staff?
Looks like we may have some. Mr. Gonzalez?
Yeah, I'm wondering what's the, I, I know you mentioned there's a, there's room for expansion to add more gates. What's the expected lifespan of this building? Like 20 years, 30 years, 50 years? Like what, what's the horizon for that?
Well, Steve, you want to, you want to take that one?
Yeah. So in our, in our 20-year, we've done a 20-year master plan. We do them in 20-year increments. We feel like this building's going to, going to take us through the next 20 years. It'll give us the capacity to do a million passengers per year. And looking at our growth and, and the projections for what we're going to do with flights, we think that's probably going to get us through the next at least 10 to 20 years. Now, a lot of that depends on things like COVID that happen and, and slow down airline growth. And, and you know, there always seems to be something. So we're looking at it for at least a 10-year and probably 20-year build at 10 gates. That'll get us to a million passengers.
Thank you.
Any other questions, commissioners? Comments?
I have a question.
Ms. Jensen?
Is there really a demand for this? We've seen so many carriers come in and out of the Provo Airport in the last several years. And then they've reduced their passenger load or they've, they've cut flights because they weren't profitableized.
Okay, yeah, there is a demand. We started commercial service in 2011 with Frontier Airlines.
The second part of that is, does this cost the city of Provo, Provo citizens any money? Or is this all paid for by this funding that you guys found? Just so people have an idea of what they're signing up for here.
Okay, so to the first question, is there a demand? Yes. When we started commercial service with Frontier Airlines, we were just over 10,000 deployments a year, somewhere around 18 to 20. At this point, we've had nothing but growth every single year and we're at about 116,000 deployments per year right now. We would have more than that, but we are limited by gate space. Now, you mentioned that some have stopped flowing. First of all, there's only been two carriers that have come into Provo in the last 21 years. One was Frontier and one was Allegiant. We can go into why Frontier left, but the, the main thing was not that their planes were not being full, but that they were purchased by another company who took those aircraft. So the aircraft that were using to serve Provo were actually no longer available. So that's why we lost Frontier. As we picked up Allegiant, they started off just doing two flights a week. Very quickly, they ramped that up. And before COVID, we were doing three flights a day. So, and, and, and airline like Allegiant, they do, they experiment because they are fast and agile and they do point-to-point, they can experiment with routes. So they experimented with the San Diego route. They found out that people were actually using the San Diego route as another LA route, for example. It was just a Southern California route. So they would fly down at LA and fly out of San Diego, for example. I know my wife and I actually did that because the timing worked out better. So they figured they were just cannibalizing their own market. So they wanted to just add flights to LA and not have to go into San Diego, which is a difficult airport to go into. So that's what happened with the San Diego flight. And then the added flights to LA started to drop off because of COVID. Any reduction you've seen in flights has been, recently has been because of COVID. And it's interesting to point out that the Provo Airport is the top performing airport of any airport that Allegiant flies to. In other words, our load- In other words, our load factor, the percentage of seats that are filled on the aircraft in Provo are higher than the percentage of aircraft filled anywhere else in the country right now during the COVID crisis. We're, we're four. So the only reason for reduction of flights is simply that as an overall fleet, they've reduced.
Okay, I was, I was just thinking about the Oakland one because it seems like those flights weren't always full. So I wondered if there was some other issue there.
There is, and we can go into that. It has to do with Alaska Airlines and Delta Airlines. And it's a long story. I can probably tell you offline, but just know.
Don't worry about it then. As long as you can, as long as we know there's business and this isn't a crazy idea to build a larger airport, then we're all happy about that. Thank you.
Mr. Henry?
So a quick anecdote, I actually flew into Provo Airport a few months ago. That was about a year or so ago. Anyway. As we landed, there was a plane already at the gate. And the pilot told us we had to wait for the plane to pull away. Stayed away behind me. Wait, that's my connecting flight. She realized what a mistake she had made, that having only one gate made her miss her connecting flight. So I definitely feel like extra gates are, are necessary for better service. As I'm looking at this plan, I'm seeing a parking lot that has a lot of green spaces. Are there going to be a lot of trees? Large trees to help shade all that extra asphalt in that area?
There are, there are trees planned. We, we wanted to keep larger trees out. So the, the way that our drainage are, are kind of, part of our treatment for the site is to utilize these, these green strips between parking lanes here as bio swales. So we're, we're collecting, we're collecting water and they flow toward the moat where they eventually end up in the moat after being surface treated in these bio swales. So the just the nature of those bio swales, we, we keep larger trees out of there. We do have larger trees in the hammerheads to, to kind of provide that, you know, that aesthetic and that shade to, to the system. As well as in our, our larger planning strip here that separates the loop road from the, the parking lot.
That's also going to be a bio swell?
No, that'll be, that's just a, a planning strip. It's a mix of shrubs, trees, sod, boulders, rock mulch, that kind of thing.
Okay. Okay.
And I just had a quick question. The current airport terminal uses a hard stands for embarking and disembarking. Will the new terminal be utilizing jetways or still hard stands?
It'll be a combination. At, at, at opening for this, for the terminal building, we'll have, we're planning to have a jetway, one jetway off of the south side of the building. The future expansions, when we, when we expand to 10 gates, those gates will, will, those expanded gates will all be served by jet, jet bridges to the aircraft. Because the, the expansion on either ends of the building will be on the second floor. So you're, you're starting higher off the ground. With the current layout, the three northern aircraft will be served just by the, like the, the jetways that they are now. With that, that fourth position being served by a, by a jet bridge.
Great.
It's a long jet bridge. You gotta, to get ADA compliant, you have to have a lot of length to climb up to the sill heights of those aircraft. So we have a lot of length out to this aircraft on the south side.
Great, thank you. Any other questions? Comments, commissioners?
I have another question.
Ms. Johnson?
Just in response to the question about the tree coverage in the parking lot, are they not required to have the same shade requirements that we just finished discussing and, and sending on to the city council? I guess that's a question for staff.
So this is in the PF zone. They are required to have 15 cheese per acre, which, which they are meeting.
Okay, so the requirements that we passed were just specifically for those commercial zones.
Aaron, can I add? This is Brian. The challenge we have with some trees down there is the water table's only about two feet below ground surface. So we're quite limited on what trees we can actually get to live in that kind of environment. So our landscape architects are working with that challenge as well, but we are trying to provide as much shade as possible. Giving, given that, I mean, you can get a cottonwood and a Russian olive to grow anywhere, but that's not, that's not the kind of tree we want, so.
But do their site plans meet the, the present landscaping requirements? We're not overlooking that requirement?
I don't believe we are, no.
Okay, thank you. That was all I wanted.
All right, if we have no further questions for the applicant at this point, I would like to open this item up to public comment. And could we have that screen up, please?
Oh. Yep.
And if you could just let us know if there are any public comments coming in?
There are no public comments at the moment. Aaron, can you bring up the public comment slide?
10 more seconds.
Thank you.
Okay, no public comments. Great, thank you so much. Right, then I will close item eight to public comments at this time and turn it back over to the commissioners for further discussion and/or motion. And again, this is administrative, so we will be making a decision on the concept plan. Mr. Anderson? And you're muted again.
Wow. Once again, I apologize, but I'm ready to make a motion.
All right, Mr. Anderson?
And I don't have my agenda right in front of me. We're on, this is number eight, right? Item number eight? So I move that we approve the proposed project plan for item number eight, the new airport terminal.
Okay, so Mr. Anderson, your motion is to approve item eight. Alex Nodich requires, requests project plan approval for a new airport terminal building located approximately 1300 South Lakeview Parkway in the planned industrial commercial PIZ, PIC zone in the Provo Bay neighborhood. Do we have a second, Mr. Anderson's motion on item eight?
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Urkiaga. And we will now take a vote. All those in favor? Ms. Urkiaga?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Ms. Jensen?
Aye.
Mr. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Knudsen?
Aye.
And myself, Ms. Jensen, aye. So that's unanimous approval of item number eight. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Right, so it is four minutes until 10 o'clock. We're going to continue then items nine, 10, and 11. And Mr. Pepperoni, I presume that means they will be docketed for the next hearing. Is that correct?
Yes, they'll be first on the agenda in two weeks.
Perfect. And there was also an item 12, and I'll just give everyone a heads up on that. It's to nominate and vote to confirm new chair and co-chair of the planning commission. I think Mr. Anderson and I have been doing this for a little over two years. Mr. Anderson is the vice chair. So think about who you think would be best suited. It'd be great to give someone an opportunity to chair and vice chair. And we do actually have now a little checklist that I've pulled together that kind of takes you through the steps of the process of conducting the hearing. So please keep that in mind and we will add that to the next agenda as well. So, thank you, everyone. Welcome to the three new members. Great to have you here. And we got off a little easier tonight by agreeing to adjourn at 10. Occasionally, the hearings don't last quite as long and sometimes they last a little longer. So thank you for joining us. And do we have a motion to adjourn?
Without Mr. Howard, I guess I better make that motion and move that we adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Ms. Johnson. Do we have a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Ms. Urkiaga. Thank you so much, commissioners. Hearing is now adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See you in two weeks.
Bye.